So submitted comments today, some of which I think were follow-ups to some of the items that the applicant had addressed in the interim that had been raised in the first iteration that were not stormwater related. And so I think, I'm just pulling those up, those came in this afternoon as well. And there were sort of the responses to the applicant's response to the original iteration of comments. So some of them, they felt like were addressed and then the others, they, I don't know that they, since Ty and Bond, some of the issues were related to traffic and you heard from Ty and Bond, the consultant, about the traffic studies. So DPW didn't have the ability to see that presentation. So there's still, some of the comments, they felt like were still not addressed, although under the zoning, planning board is the jurisdiction to make a determination. And the zoning actually specifically says that there's no traffic mitigation required for general industrial zone property. So, you know, just because DPW says they're not sure that they've been addressed doesn't mean you couldn't issue a permit or make a judgment call about the information that you heard last time. So that's about it. I can go into the specific DPW memo later after you hear from the applicant and the things, the other items that they're going to address.
Okay. So Wayne, you're going to pick up where you left off?
Yeah, just very briefly, because we presented it last time, so I'm not going to repeat any of that. As Carol mentioned, we have the stormwater permit. The only comment I want to make by the DPW memo is this memo was issued half an hour, an hour before the stormwater permit was issued. So in the memo you see it says, "Stormwater permit hasn't been issued," and they continue to have some comments about the stormwater. I'm assuming because an hour or so later they issued the stormwater permit, once they finished review, that they've, that those issues have been to their satisfaction. So I can answer questions about sort of the big picture or traffic, but let me ask Jeff from Berkshire Design to address any more technical questions.
Okay.
Hi, thank you. So as Wayne indicated, we did receive, Carolyn indicated, we did receive the stormwater permit this afternoon, just after the memo, the memo was received. I can go through some of the items. A lot of them are items that will be addressed during completion of the construction documents. We're going to continue to work with the DPW and coordinate the Damon Road project. Some of the other utility issues are going to be coordinated all during construction, the phasing. And, you know, we've agreed to, you know, continue to correspond with them and make sure that all those things are aligned. There are a couple of items in here that they explicitly said were not addressed. I can just go through those quickly. Everything else was either addressed or partially addressed. And the remainder, like I said, will be dealt with during the preparation of the construction documents as the project progresses. Some of the items that they were not addressed, one was the site plan appearing to be a master plan and phased construction plan should be integrated with the overall site plan. Their response was not addressed, but again, like I explained, it's, we're going to continue to coordinate with them through the construction process as the, as the site is built out. So all those things will be addressed during the preparation of the construction documents. There was a comment about utilities not being shown from the River Run condominiums. Those weren't explicitly picked up in our survey. We will coordinate and pick up those utilities so that any new utilities that are proposed as part of this project going down the access road, there's, you know, ample space and ability to install all of those, all of those items. And I think the only other one that was listed as not addressed, this is again for the River Run condominium utilities. Everything else, aside from traffic, was, was addressed or will continue to be developed during, during the preparation of the CDs.
Okay.
If I'm happy to go through any of the specific items if there's other questions.
Maybe after discussion, Carolyn, you can go over the memo.
Yeah.
And hit the highlights, the technical stuff and the stuff for kind of as-built or when construction is done.
Yeah.
Maybe that's not so relevant, but the bigger issues.
Okay.
Questions by the board? We heard the presentation last time, so nothing's really changed other than the stormwater issue.
Just a question about the lights. Did you guys talk, well, for other projects we've had that are down near Massato Von, we've had them on timers so that the lights in the parking areas would, would, would not be on 20, you know, from dusk till dawn.
Sure.
Is it a possibility that the lights in that area could, could go off at 10 or 11?
Sure. I don't, I don't see any reason why they couldn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the only other question, do you have to do the full build-out, the full planting if they're only putting the pads in? So the trees, everything has to be planted for the plan, even if they're only putting pads in for the buildings right now?
Well, as I understand, they're not going to put any pads in at all. The first, this, the build-out might be a long time. I think-
Oh, the pads won't even go in for the first-
Right. So I think the part, the access road and particularly down to the, you know, whatever comes first, we think, I assume we think the docks are going to potentially come in first before anything else. So there has to be, the parking area for the dock and the area, the docks needs to be constructed. But I think the landscaping and, but it also could be part of your condition of the permit that certain elements are in, at certain phased points. But landscaping, given this location, it's set way back, you're not really going to see it from the road, I think it would be appropriate that landscaping items go in at the time of individual building build-out, because then you, you obviously don't want to put everything in and then have to rip it up when you come for the next building.
Just, you want to comment at the lighting? If you want all the lighting on a timer, we could totally live with that. Our preference would be parking lot lighting, it's fine to be on a timer, just the wall packs and the buildings themselves may want to stay on for security. This around doors.
I think that's what we've done in the past, is that the, the lights in the lots don't have to be on.
Yes.
Right. Atwood Drive.
Yeah, we just did it at Wood Drive and there are a couple of other places where we've done it really so.
Yeah. It's just the wall packs on.
Right.
I'm actually kind of concerned about the security back there. We went on the site as if there were tents in the woods and the residents back along that road were worried about people coming and going back there. So I mean, that might be a reason we wouldn't want to restrain. I almost think there's a gate there at 10 o'clock as opposed to just lights on.
Okay, I guess, yeah, it's, I mean, is it, would the lights attract people to go hang out or would they discourage, it's-
Right.
Not now.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a tough site, lit or not lit, it's just, it's so far removed-
Right.
From everybody.
Right.
Okay.
I think if there are tents in the woods, it's sort of a separate issue from lighting.
Rick Klein, Berkshire Design Group. I think on behalf of the rowing community, we'd probably prefer to have the lights, they have the ability to have them on all night, just in case for security reasons for one. But another reason is that a lot of the rowers get there before dawn and so they'd want some lights on when they get there and so on. So if we could have that option, and what we'd happily do is scale back to half lights or some other, you know, one-third lights or just to have enough on for security and let the rowers in pre-dawn hours.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Lights won't be visible from the apartments.
I'm not sure. Could you see the lights, for the sake of argument, follow the lights in the parking lot are on 24/7? Can you, would you be able to see them from the apartment complex?
I wouldn't anticipate that you could, no. Yeah. It's far enough away.
Any other questions?
I was looking at the, the area, it looks like there's a couple of landlocked lots in there that this development to interfere with. I'm assuming that they have a right of passage, whether that's been addressed or not.
So there's two lots, one of which has a right from the access road, not through the lane side, so they wouldn't be affected. The other, it's my understanding, we haven't done a title search, but it's my understanding the other lot has a right to cross the lane property and they will continue to have that. Assuming they have a legal right, that right will continue if this one changes. Anything else?
So I was kind of fuzzy about traffic last time and if that lot, if that empty lot got developed and had the right, then that would add one more business use to that private lane.
And assuming they're above 2,000 square feet, they're going to become before you fair on project, right?
It's used now, it's not going to add anything more. I mean, it could, but it does not.
Because the, the riverfront area, that property, the footprint of the development area is about maxed out anyway, so it couldn't cover more land. But you're right, they could certainly go from a contractor's lay-down yard to a building within the same footprint.
Anybody else or open up a public?
Okay, if anyone's here from the public, I'll, I'll call on you. If you could just come up to the podium, state your name and address and jump in. Yep.
John Lyons.
You can leave it in the holder, they'll, they'll pick you up.
Oh, okay. I'm used to karaoke.
Don't start.
No, no, I won't.
You have a tight agenda.
Believe me, I won't. Yeah, I'm John Lyons from AD Damon Road, which is River Run. I had the dubious privilege a few years ago of, when I was a trustee, of serving a no-trespassing order to, what can I say, a river rat? No, that would be incorrect politically, but I had told him that he was not welcome with his dog on the property. And anyhow, that night, somebody spotted him coming back and I did have to serve a no trespassing order on him in the presence of a couple of policemen. I'm 72, I was like 67 at the time, but I had to run down in barefoot through the woods to find his tent with the, with the officers. Anyhow, the thrust of my argument, not my argument, but my point here is if we do indeed have to endure more traffic there and it's already very congested trying to get in and out at certain times of the day, sometimes it's fine. I have noticed officers on the River Run side of Dunkin' Donuts backed into a side driveway waiting for speeders. And that's good, that's a good thing. But when the, when the perpetrators stop, they seem to stop in front of the River Run exit entrance. I wonder if maybe the mayor or the chief of police could kind of advise these officers to jump out as soon as they can after the speeder goes by, but wait maybe 20, maybe even 40 seconds before they turn on their lights and their sirens. Because at that point, the alleged perpetrator could just pull into the mini-mart, which includes the cat hospital and so forth, on the right-hand side, an easy stop. It would subject the officer to less danger from getting out of his car and it would get him and the alleged perpetrator the hell out of the way of the traffic flow. And if there's nothing better than that, that you can do when, when you're, you know, doing all this reconstructing, that, you know, that might be a one or two or three percent advantage in favor of people trying to get out and get to work and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Jonathan Wright. 91 Olander Drive. I think the security question is something that all of us are concerned about, young people at dusk and old people at dawn or some combination. And many rowing sites are at riverfront areas around the country. Some are well-lit, some are partially lit. There is a universal experience there that the, that many riverfront places in America, because of polluted water, have essentially been abandoned and have become gathering places for all kinds of elements, criminal and simply homeless folks who, who, who hang out there or live there. And that the, the advent of, of other citizens' activity, wholesome activities, athletics, is a really positive outcome. It's shown up in Middletown, it's shown up up and down the Charles, it's shown up in Nebraska, the University of Nebraska. It's quite a remarkable thing that kids and young people and old people and in-between people go there to do that. So I would say that, that the folks at River Run who might have a, a very legitimate concern about intrusion, actually this should help. Over time, I would hope that that gully between the two properties, which is actually the remains of the old Northampton-New Haven Canal, could be cleaned up and shown off as its, for its historic value. So I think in the end, we'd have the same interests. I think also paddlers and rowers coming back and forth will want to adjust because no one likes to stand and wait in line to get out in traffic. I think there may be some plans afoot to improve Damon Road and for all concern, that would be, would be an advantage. Let me just say a few things. This is a unique site. I have looked at every waterfront piece of property available and not available between the Holyoke Canoe Club and the Whately Line on both sides of the river. This is unique. It is a man-made harbor dug out in 1857 for the terminus of the canal. It is unique because it is, it is all of those things. It is above the flood, the 100-year flood line. The site is outside of the 200-year, the 200-foot buffer. It is in Northampton, which means that the youth rowers can get there in their carpools from school. And it's available. I started working on this particular site five and a half years ago when Lane, and we got nowhere, when Lane called me three years ago, a little over, and said they were interested, I was just ecstatic. The rowing programs that have helped youth and, and us older folks over the last 10, 11, 12 years here have really, have, it's a story to tell and I don't want you, to bore you with the whole story, but it's been a transformative thing for the high school and for adults. I will simply tell you that in my own experience, acquiring this skill late in life actually saved my life. So I'm here to tell you about that. Do the same for others. The program opportunities that can expand in the morning and the afternoon for special needs kids during the day, there's all kinds of ways to reach less well-served portions of our population if there is broader access, a longer season and a safe access to the site. Right now, the rowing programs at the Ox Bow, which are wonderfully hosted by the marina, when the water is high, you cannot reach the boathouse. So if there is a medical emergency at the boathouse, they will take a pontoon boat over to the marina and it's 20 to 25 minutes to Coolidge. That is not a safe condition. In this condition, we've made arrangements and talked at length with the fire department about locating their rescue boat at this location, which will give them about an eight-minute response to the Coolidge Bridge instead of 52 minutes now from the firehouse down to the Ox Bow and back up. It's a lot to commend this from a number of perspectives, so I really urge you to take that broad perspective. And as far as lighting, I think we have a dark skies requirement. And having been through that a number of times with you, but also in the work that we do in town, it's quite remarkable that actually dark skies lighting and works. Wall packs are a problem because they, they glare out, but you can light and secure a site with close to zero spillage. So I think from a neighborhood standpoint, the project would be for good neighbors. I think it's also, I'm sorry to take so much time, it calls for a 20,000 square foot boathouse, you know, in, in our dreams. That would, you know, we should be so lucky. Were there a partner to produce such a facility, that would be great. In the short term and in the foreseeable future, unless something changes radically, we'll be very hard-pressed to raise the funds for something simply to keep the boats dry out of the sun. So we'll be working hard to do that with, with your support and appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Yep, in the back.
My name is Kathy Velasquez, I live at River Run, AD Damon Road, apartment 5102. So I'm really excited about the boathouse project. I think it's a wonderful idea to have that area developed. And I know that Northampton was just voted one of the most pedestrian-friendly cities. It had that honor. I just wanted to remind the city that there are 500-plus people living at River Run and I've lived there 10 years and I've heard talk over that time about sort of linking us to the city with walkways or being able to cross that road or having a sidewalk. So I'm hoping that through this time, that could be something that's really looked at and developed as well. My, my fear is that we're getting, we're going to be boxed in. If, if we could see movement towards having a walkway, being able to cross the street, as I, as I've told Wayne, we had a great info meeting and he was there, we thank him very much. I see old people walking on the street to go to CVS to get their prescriptions. I see young moms and I see kids with, young moms with their kids just walking on the street. So I would love to see a balance, like, I think the, like I said, the project is great, but we need a way to be able to get out of there safely with walking or with bicycles. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yep. Evening, Tim O'Donnell, River Run. I was here last month, so I won't reiterate the many concerns that I expressed. I just want to reemphasize the desire for city planners to consider, some considerations for River Run due to the anticipated increased use of our recently restored private driveway. And I do want to emphasize that because I know the pictures say Lane Road or Access Road to Lane. I just want to remind folks, that's our private driveway. Yes, they do have a legal easement on it, but if, in all these planning discussions, some consideration could be made for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Philip Pulaski, on behalf of the Northampton Community Rowing, I'm the president of the association. I'd like to thank you and to thank Jonathan for all the hard work I'm putting in this site. As I mentioned before, rowing is an increasingly popular activity here in Northampton and right now we have over 92 eighth to 12th graders participating and depending on time of year, two to three dozen adults. That doesn't include the Yankee rowing and the kayakers and paddlers that would use this site. This site would be a definite benefit to Northampton and add to the attraction of being a pedestrian-friendly and a river-friendly site. And the legitimate concerns of River Run, I do hope you address because that'll also impact the ability for the rowers to get to the site. But I do thank you for doing this and please give it your serious consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yep.
Hi, I'm Jose Baran and I'm also a resident at River Run. Like Tim was saying, one of my biggest concerns there is, I work here in Northampton and when I get out in the morning, sometimes it's okay, you can get out, nothing's blocked. Sometimes I come home and it's a bottleneck all the way down Damon Road. I mean, it's tough to get in, it's tough to get out. I can't even fathom, once you get the rowing team in there and you get the parents coming down to see the, you know, the competitions and all that, how bad it's going to get. I mean, the road is very small, it is a private driveway, it's not really designed to be a road. We just finished paving it not too long ago. River Run actually paid for that. So, I mean, we definitely need to make that a priority, how that's going to work out. I mean, there's only one entrance to River Run, we have 500-plus people living there. That's a lot of people that live in one spot and have to come in and out the same way. God forbid, something happened and we get that access road blocked by an accident or whatever, we're stuck, we can't get out. I mean, there's, there's only one exit and one entrance. So we definitely need to make that a priority. We can't just kind of sweep it under the rug or, I mean, it's, it's a great thing that we're having a rowing team come there and participate and, and I think it's a great development, better than what they had there before, which was nothing. Safety concerns should also be addressed. I like the fact that there's going to be lighting proposed, you know, 24 hours a day. That's very important because right now, I mean, I worked for the prosecutor's office for 13 years and we did have crime there, we did have a lot of vagrants that came and set up tents in the back by the river. It's still happening. What is, what's going to happen once they start developing, I don't know if it's going to push them away or attract more people. But what's happening is, is that they eventually will stroll over the river, see if there's cars that are open that they can break into or whatever, so maybe some, go over the police logs and stuff to see if there's, you know, how many incidents have been there, do some kind of research on, on the crime rate, you know, that whole area and how it's all going to change and the possibilities and all that. It's, it's a big concern for us. I mean, we've already had a big drop in the, in the real estate and so we don't want to take another drop because they're putting something back there that's going to affect us in a negative way. But I think it's, it's a great development and I'm all for it, but we definitely need to address the road, the access, how we get in, how we get out. I know there's going to be a light put over at a industrial lane, that's going to affect us as well. That bottleneck will increase now because there's going to be a light there. So all that's going to affect us in a, in a really bad, negative way and we just need to address it. We need to figure out how we can do it so that everyone's happy, everyone gets what they want and, you know, and, and that's it. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Questions from the board?
Yeah, I had a question. A question for the crew. Are they going to actually run races from that location?
It would, you know, take some time, but at the most you would have one in the fall and one in the spring. But it is potential, once we get a boathouse from the side up, but it's nowhere that too big.
There's a place you could put a course right in there?
Yes. Just north of there.
A 30-foot wide access easement.
30-foot wide easement.
But what's the paved way? From this line to this line?
Jeff, we can ask, you know what the, there's a 30-foot wide easement on the road. What's the actual width of the paved area that currently exists? Is it 30 feet or is-
It varies. It varies from, you know, 20 feet up to 26. It's not a consistent width all the way down.
Okay.
I suspect it's 20 or less the length.
So where are we with sidewalks?
What do you mean?
They're planning a sidewalk in there. Are they planning a sidewalk along the-
Only if they get permission.
All right, so that's, so we're showing sidewalks, we're offering to do them, but the right of way doesn't, we don't think gives us the right to do it. So if River Run would grant the right, that would be part of what we're doing.
Do we ask the River Run, do they, I mean, who are you, Wayne, to make that decision? Who's, who's decision, who has the final decision? Who's decision, who has the final decision?
You know, I don't know their bylaws. I've been with the trustees twice in the neighborhood once, and I don't know, some condos require a supermajority vote of the membership. So I don't know the, I mean, I've been with the trustees and basically made the offer and.
Do the plans show it? Does that mean we have to put a condition in or is, because it's on the plans?
Well, I think what you can do is put a condition that they, that there's a good faith effort for the applicant to proceed on construction of that easement and show that it has either, that it's failed because, show the, prove the vote of the trustees indicating that they don't want it, or showing that they do want it, and then if it is approved, you could put a time certain by which it needs to be constructed.
And that's the same thing with the condition that's in there for, before the construction of the second pad, that they'll have the left lane turn added to the end of the road?
Right.
So it's similar to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. I mean, back to the lighting issue, I mean, I'm not sure, it sounds like we've heard both sides of it. I mean, I brought it up. I'm willing to allow the applicant and the residents to decide for that particular location. Having, for security reasons, because it is so remote, leaving the lights on, it's fine with me. So I'm not sure what other people feel.
I don't have an issue with it from a security sense. I don't know if you need, you know, the level of lighting that is required or the amount of lighting that's required, or if we're prohibited from keeping the lighting on, you know, because of the night sky issue.
No, you're not prohibited. I think it's just an issue of, you know, energy conservation versus, and whether it makes sense. And I think, you know, given the feedback, you might consider either requiring it to be dimmed or something at a certain time, or just not addressing it, not requiring it at all. I mean, given that we do have the dark sky, there's cutoffs and the light levels are low as it is, lower than what previous commercial developments have been built. So it's really up to the board to determine whether they think there should be any adjustment to that or any restriction.
Well, I like not having the pack lights on the building's side by town. That was an offer made by the applicant.
Because they're the ones that either go up or have the most spill.
And I think they would have every incentive to light the parking lot less if they felt it really was needed.
Right.
So I, I think it will be self-correcting is what I bet.
Right. No need to make a condition.
Well, what Wayne was saying though is they were going to leave the law, the building lights, the wall packs on. And I think, Devin, you're saying you would like those turned off.
Those are the ones that I think are, I mean, if you're lighting the parking lot, why would you need those building lights on?
I think at entry, at the entryway, the lights need to be on, but I don't know about, you know, circumference of the building.
I guess I was just under the assumption that building wasn't being used at night, but I guess it could be, so.
Not so much at night, I think.
Lurking in the doorway.
Right, I mean. Be the early morning, I think.
Typically, we hear from police is, they're not going to live there, they're going to do a quick drive-by. If they drive by, they like to see if someone's lurking by the building, the parking lot's less than an issue. I mean, obviously, parking lot's an issue if there's people there, but.
Yeah, I mean, given the remoteness of the location, it's the, I don't feel as strongly about it as I've done in other places because it's remote. When we did it before, we was on, we was down on King Street, you know, where we're trying to do something about the overflow of the lights. So, you know, the remoteness of this. I can't read the photometrics unfortunately because the numbers are too small. I'm assuming everything's below a five.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And they are LED, they are LED fixtures, so, you know, cutting the intensity in half could be achievable.
Are they 20-foot poles?
Um, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's. Feel that strongly about it, you know, but.
So I guess the options are, you know, no wall packs and lights in the parking lot, or the other way around, we're both on, but we dim the parking lots, or we just allow the applicant to self-regulate based on what they see as their needs.
Seems, seems to me that if they comply with the light or lighting ordinance, they should be fine.
I mean, in the past, maybe, to be consistent, we've had wall packs on and site lighting off. In this case, maybe wall packs on, site lighting reduced.
Well, I think, places like Cole Morgan, which is in the middle of a residential neighborhood, this doesn't have that problem.
It's next to a fairly large residential neighborhood.
Oh, no, but I think, but what they're saying is they can't see them from River Run. I think that was.
How can that be true?
That was the response to the question, is you won't be able to see these lights from River Run. So that's, I guess that's why I wasn't worried about that. I mean, unless you, there's a particular thought you guys have for how you want to do this.
I mean, obviously, we'd like as much flexibility as possible because you're right. We don't know the issues. I mean, to the extent that we have a homeless population staying there, we'd probably leave lights on. My assumption is, the more active the use the site is, the less that's the problem. But I think we'd like to be able to respond to changing conditions.
After all, there are no lights there now at all, right?
Right. I mean, I'd be inclined to say have wall packs on at a minimum for security, building security, and then leave it up to the, to them to figure out if they need or want.
The poles?
The poles and how many or to what degree. All right, so public comment's still open?
I'll move a closed public comment.
Second?
Second.
Stephen, second. All in favor? So the, I haven't, as was the case last time, I haven't heard anything negative about the actual project as far as what it is, what it, what it means to the community, function and so forth. It's been security and traffic. So I don't have, I don't have an issue with the building, the layout, you know, the lighting we discussed. I think we just need to get a handle on traffic and safety. Safety, one of the biggest things, which we talked about well before this project, foot traffic, pedestrian traffic from River Run, which if we can tie in with sidewalks and make a good faith effort and so forth, that would at least be movement in the right direction. And then the traffic, you know, it's a tough issue that coming out, coming in and out of Damon Road is going to be difficult. It is difficult. But I don't think that should preclude us from developing what seems to be a good project.
Do we have some conditions?
Um, yes. So as, as you all know, site plan approval is about the way the site functions. It's not whether or not the use should be allowed there, so you're looking at the technical standards. And based on common and the sort of issues that have come up in the public hearing and review, one, the multi-use path shall be constructed concurrent with the development of the first office or commercial building construction. Prior to the issuance of the building permit for the second commercial building or construction that results in 20,000 square feet of space, the left turn lane shall be added to the driveway intersection at Damon Road as recommended in the traffic analysis. Covered sheltered bike storage areas shall be provided in front of each building for storage of at least six bicycles. Alternatively, end users may incorporate storage inside the building if it's shown to accommodate six bicycles at the time of building permit application. Bicycle loop shall be provided in front of the boathouse for up to 10 bicycles. Prior to division of property interest, shared maintenance and access agreement shall be recorded at the registry of deeds for the boathouse and the commercial buildings. Language should be submitted to the Office of Planning and Development for approval prior to recording. And then one that we just discussed, the sidewalk to Damon Road shall be constructed concurrent with the buildout of the first phase of the project, either the boathouse or, you know, whichever comes first, unless proof is shown that the River Run condominium association has voted to prohibit its construction.
That maintenance agreement covers the issues of snow removal and?
Right, on that site.
Right.
And the issue of maintenance of the actual easement access is, that's not what I certainly intended by this because there's already a written easement for the property, and I think it makes sense for, if River Run feels like they're not, maybe they need to go and investigate what the easement language is and go back to the property owners and say, well, as part of the easement, UOX. But that's a separate document. It's already on record.
You ready for a motion?
I'm ready. You guys ready?
I move that we grant the request by the City of Northampton Office of Planning and Development for Site Plan for Construction of 40,000 plus or minus square feet of office space and 20,000 plus or minus square feet boathouse and related site development for property on Damon Road, Lane Construction Site, Northampton, map ID 18-12.
Conditions?
With the conditions.
Pardon, but, I'm sorry. With the conditions that, here, Carolyn, just there.
Stephen, second. All in favor? Okay, what's up? Thank you.
Three minutes remaining.
I know. We're at the same time.
No, just two.
Yeah. What, you don't like me, even?
I know, I felt bad.
Thanks.
You can move down here, so I won't be in the camera.
Oh, that's okay.
So the first one, I really like.
This is a revised layout.
Okay.
Who's that guy?
That's second. All right. So are we doing Austin Circle first?
Before. Nope. Yes, we should. Moving back. Is this the document that we referred to in the application? The application?
I don't know if that's the one or not.
Birch Hill.
Oh, actually, this is for the second one, sorry. This is Austin Circle, not Birch Hill. Sorry.
Come on, Mark, tick, 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 tick.
All right, well, I'm looking for my things. It is five minutes behind. I want to open up a request by Northeast Solar Design for special permit for ground-mounted solar panels at 38 Birch Hill Road, Florence, map ID 29-559.
Not much of a presentation. Didn't bring enough documents for everyone, but if you need to see the site plans, et cetera, of the array.
No, it's in the application.
It's in the application. Yeah, this is a simple ground mount array at 38 Birch Hill.
Could you state your name, sorry?
My name is Gregory Garrison. I'm the general manager of Northeast Solar. It's a 6.2 kilowatt array mounted to the north side of the house, facing southern. Dimensions approximately 33 feet long, 14 or 11 and a half feet wide. No really visible connection between that and the adjoining properties as far as a visual standpoint. We did post a sign, which I brought with me for 14 days, put on the front. So it's fairly straightforward.
Just the reason we're doing this is because.
So the way the zoning, the way the zoning was adopted was that there are certain solar arrays that are allowed by right in the zoning, and those are anything mounted on the roof, and I'm talking about residential districts for the moment, anything mounted on the roof or over a yard area that might be the parking driveway or garage or any kind of parking facility. But then, and then, I'm sorry, and over a driveway, it's site plan approval, but then off the driveway in the yard, the planning board requires a special per, there's a special permit required by the planning board, sorry. And the issue at the time was, you know, I think one of not knowing, how big are these systems going to be? And it allows up to 200% of energy generated for the associated site. So if, and this is about accessory uses, not just the function of generating power in and of itself. So, you know, you've seen one of these already up on Chesterfield Road. That was a bigger system and generating more than the needs for the use at hand, but nevertheless, there isn't really an intermediate step in the zoning allowing for something that's pretty much just for the need of the homeowner as opposed to needs of the homeowner plus. It goes up to 200% is the allowance in a residential district. So two issues. One is there are quite a bit, there's more setbacks than standard detached accessory structures for solar mounted arrays, and I think you'll probably hear more comment about that at another date when you don't have a bunch of public hearings. But at any rate, that's where the zoning sits at this point.
But didn't we, in the new zoning, the proposed zoning changes for U or A, B, and C, we changed it?
Yeah, there, it's on the table, but it hasn't really moved anywhere. So you guys have had conversation about maybe reevaluating that and also looking at the setbacks because in A, B, and C, it also requires currently 50 feet of setback, and most of the lots in A, B, and C don't even have 50 feet to begin with.
I was going to ask you about the 50-foot setback seems unreal for people that live on a 100-foot lot.
Right, right.
But I think if, you know, somebody can put their solar ray over their driveway by right, and our fear was we have these giant ground-mounted solar arrays in somebody's yard that aesthetically wouldn't be appropriate, but if it's, if it's up to 100%, and it's specifically just for the house, that might be, you know, something we look at to allow by right, so that an education such as this doesn't have to go through this whole process.
We have, we have an additional eight of these pending after this first hearing.
It's all doomed in one night.
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah, so it might be something to think about.
For your sake, too.
Right, exactly.
Along that line, I was not really impressed with the applications.
Okay.
There was no locus on the front showing its location in relation to surrounding properties or cities.
Right, yeah, we subsequently, we have, through the GIS mapping.
Yeah, and then this thing is.
Is this different than?
It's just a plot line, showing the outlines and exact words that's on the lot.
Right, I think a smaller version of that was included in the staff.
All right.
Yeah. I'd like a little more visual detail.
Okay. Would you like the outline of the plot and the setbacks in within that?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay.
More information than we need is fine.
I totally.
Any other questions for the board? Is anyone here from the public that wishes to speak about this? Yep.
I'm Louis Hasbrook. I'm on the Northampton Energy Sustainability Commission, and I'm speaking, I'd speak in favor of this project and one in its own, also. From our perspective, you know, solar arrays that supply power for a single dwelling are the goal of the project.
Thanks, Larry. Anybody else? No?
Move above the public hearing.
Second.
Stephen, all in favor? Any discussion? Seems pretty straightforward.
I move we approve a request by Ronald Bryce for special permit for ground-mounted panels at 88 Austin Circle, Florence.
Oh, this is a.
Wrong one.
One before, back up.
Up. Sorry, sorry. I move we approve a request by Northeast Solar Design for special permit for ground-mounted solar panels at 38 Birch Road, Florence, map ID 29-559.
Birch Hill Road. No, it's all right. I went to Birch Lane by mistake.
Can I get a second?
Second.
These two eyes are squabbling.
You can't sit next to each other.
I know. Was that a second?
That was a second.
Are you going to have to remove any trees right where that's going or no?
No, sir. Not going to be, no.
There's some concrete pads on the ground now. Are those for the solar array?
No, I was going to, I was in the process of looking at a different system, and I had to see what they looked like. This, these will probably, they will be incorporated if I can use them, yes. They, they look like, they're going to be used, they were made to go in there, but then I wasn't too sure as to what I could do. So I didn't do anything else until I, I didn't realize I needed to get one more step. But those, they were going to go in, and then I said, well, I got to, once I found out I needed one more step to go into this, I had to wait and see. If I can use them, I will, yes.
Okay, there's also a stream back there.
He had to get approval from the Conservation Commission.
Okay, there is a wet...
There is approval for the Conservation.
Yep, he already went through that process and then...
And if you look up over, that's the back of Ryan Road School.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then if you would put in a locus map, I'd know that.
That's why I said you...
Some comments about the quality of the application still apply.
I...
I'd like better drawings and detail.
I'm sorry?
Better drawings and more detail.
Is, did you, on the back, is, you see more time, it's a lot more than that, the back page?
Um, it's okay, it doesn't show the stream.
The stream runs in parallel.
Yeah, this is better, but you just gave it to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Anyone from the public like to speak about this one? No?
I'm close public here.
Second.
Second, Stephen, all in favor? All right, discussion?
Now, so, so, well, I guess the only question, so if the zoning that we just discussed passes, these will no longer be special permit unless it's above 200% of the required use of the dwelling?
100%.
Well...
100%.
The zoning that's under consideration now are for A, B, and C. These two were in water supply protection, so we'd have to go back and specifically address water supply protection and then SR and RR.
Yep.
So, you know, you'd be halfway through.
But U-R-A-B-N-C, as long as it's under 100% of the use of the dwelling, it's going to be by site plan or by right?
Um, I'd have to pull that out.
Don't worry about it, I just, because I remember we talked about...
I don't remember the exact language, but we can, we can go over...
It's going to come back to us anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Or the question would be if it met all the setbacks, it'd maybe be by right, but then the question is, are setbacks reasonable?
Right, and then we had a discussion about percentage of cover, like, could they cover their entire...
Right.
Right.
Lawn.
Right.
So I think...
That's what...
That was the worry.
Right.
Okay.
Do solar panels count as open space?
Any other discussion? No? Who wants to make a motion on this one?
I'll fix it this time, yes. I move we approve a request by Ronald Greise for special permit for ground-mounted solar arrays at 88 Austin Circle, Florence. MAP ID 29-345.
Second.
Stephen, second. All in favor?
I'll try again.
All right, discussion?
Now, so, so, well, I guess the only question, so if the zoning that we just discussed passes, these will no longer be special permit unless it's above 200% of the required use of the dwelling?
100%.
Well...
100%.
The zoning that's under consideration now are for A, B, and C. These two were in water supply protection, so we'd have to go back and specifically address water supply protection and then SR and RR.
Yep.
So, you know, you'd be halfway through.
But U-R-A-B-N-C, as long as it's under 100% of the use of the dwelling, it's going to be by site plan or by right?
Um, I'd have to pull that out.
Don't worry about it, I just, because I remember we talked about...
I don't remember the exact language, but we can, we can go over...
It's going to come back to us anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Or the question would be if it met all the setbacks, it'd maybe be by right, but then the question is, are setbacks reasonable?
Right, and then we had a discussion about percentage of cover, like, could they cover their entire...
Right.
Right.
Lawn.
Right.
So I think...
That's what...
That was the worry.
Right.
Okay.
Do solar panels count as open space?
Any other discussion? No? Who wants to make a motion on this one?
I'll fix it this time, yes. I move we approve a request by Ronald Greise for special permit for ground-mounted solar arrays at 88 Austin Circle, Florence. MAP ID 29-345.
Second.
Stephen, second. All in favor? Thank you.
We've got four minutes to deal with. Eight o'clock. Okay, moving along. I'd like to open up the request for site plan approval by the Northampton group to construct an 83 ruined 58 Austin Circle assisted living facility on Village Hill Road, Northampton, MAP ID 38A-110. And we've got a presentation.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Walter Rohanian. I'm the managing director of this bond for Grantham Group. And what we're proposing is an 83-unit, three-story assisted living community, which 52% of the units are considered affordable. And what that means is residents who earn less than 60% of the area median income are actually eligible to live there, so that's a total of 43 out of the 83 units will be considered low-income. Out of those 43 low-income units, 17 of them will actually be for residents who are 30% or less of the area median income. The services offered at an assisted living, at this assisted living, will be assistance with personal care that includes bathing, dressing, grooming, three meals a day for the residents, onsite 24-hour staff, medication reminders. We have one standard of care that we give all of our residents, whether they fall into the low-income program or whether they are considered a market-rate assisted living We also offer daily activities to the residents, that will be seven days a week, weekly laundry and housekeeping services. They're all going to have their own apartments that will have an emergency call system and also night safety checks for the residents as well. We have a nurse on staff and a social worker on staff for the residents as well. We're trying to create an efficient design here by using this building. Out of the building, there will be roughly 12 one-bedrooms, and the remaining 71 units will be between studios and studio of alcove units. The average size of a studio or studio alcove unit will be about 330 square feet, and the average size of a one-bedroom is about 555 square feet. We have 24-hour site staff onboard, and we use a universal worker concept. We, our staff are companions. These companions follow everything that the resident does, whether it's help with medication reminders, whether it's help with getting dressed in the morning, or whether it's doing the activities of the day. So they have a true companion that they have that helps them every step of the way. We also have proposed two country-style dining rooms for this building as well, and the nice concept about that is when residents move into the community, they don't go into a main dining room, what they actually do is they go into a country-style type of dining room, and they're eating with the people who live on their floor, which is nice and gives a much more friendly concept for them. The project's going to generate approximately $8.6 million in construction spending and result in about 65 related jobs, should take about a year or so to build. Additionally, facility is going to make estimated annual purchases of goods and services from local vendors of about $155,000 within this local community in the areas of snow removal, program entertainment, transportation, advertising, and administrative expenses. At this point, I'd like to turn over to Dave LaPointe at Beals &amp; Thomas.
My name's Dave LaPointe from Beals &amp; Thomas. We're the civil engineers and landscape architects for this project. The site is located within the Village Hill development, and it's essentially located in this area right here with Misanti Drive to the west, Moser Street to the north, and this is Village Hill Road to the east. Route 66, Prince Street is down in this area down here, and then this is Olander Drive. This building here is the Haskell Building, or the Department of Mental Health is located here with their parking at the rear of the building, and this is an existing building that was formerly part of the Northampton State Hospital, and this is known as the male attendance building. So again, here's the male attendance building, this is Village Hill Road, Moser Street, and Misanti Drive, and this is the proposed building, sited here with access coming in off of Village Hill Road in this area, which would act as more of a drop-off pickup area with the parking lot located towards the rear of the building with access off of Misanti Drive. The intent here is that there's not a lot of traffic throughout the day. The parking lot would generally be utilized by employees who come in for work shift, as well as an occasional visitor, typically nights and weekends. There is a total of 29 parking spaces, 27 of them are located at the rear of the building here, and two handicap spaces at the front main entrance to the building off of Village Hill Road. Anyone parking in the rear parking lot in this area would simply park their vehicle and then walk their way around the building utilizing the sidewalk as well as the existing bike path that's located to the rear of the male attendance building and adjacent to the parking lot for the Haskell Building. This slide just gives a little bit of the details of the site. As mentioned, the building's a three-story building, that's actually three stories above ground. There is a basement level, which will include the kitchen, which will prepare all the meals for the residents, as well as utility rooms down there for the heating and cooling and so forth. The total site is approximately two and a half acres. Currently, it consists of two, two existing lots, but those two lots actually encompass the male attendance building as well as then some of that available vacant land in this area. We're proposing to reconfigure those lots to still have two lots, but basically to have the male attendance building on its own lot with this development on a separate lot. In the Village Hill, planned Village District, I should say, there's minimal setback requirements, and we've basically utilized the, those requirements or the minimal setback requirements to place the building up close to the sidewalk to present sort of a more interesting streetscape, but it's still, it's consistent with some of the residential buildings that were developed over the years across the street on Moser Street up in this area that were developed by the community builders. This is the floor plan of the first floor of the building. The architect is here as well, if you can go over some of the details of that, which generally show you. This is the main entrance here, some of the units spread throughout the building, as well as a lot of the activity rooms, whether it be the, a multipurpose room, a pub room, so to speak, where they might have some of their activities or functions in some of those rooms, as well as obviously some of the illustrative and nursing stations and so forth, they're located there. Actually, I guess I can jump back for a second here. The, just in terms of overall engineering design, the western parking lot here, the drainage, as you may know, that this overall Village Hill development has been master-planned, and over the past few years, there's been stormwater management infrastructure that's been constructed. So this system, that's the drainage that's been collected for this parking lot here is actually being connected to a stub that was left when Misanti Drive was improved, which then will drain to Basin 3, what's called Basin 3 over in this area on the western side of the site. In this area, as far as the entry drive, there was another stub that was left for connection anticipating development of this lot that connects to Village Hill Road, drainage infrastructure, which ultimately leads on to the Basin 4 stormwater system, which is on the far east side of the overall Village Hill development. Other utilities have already been incorporated into this development. As I said, it was master-planned, and stubs were left behind for future development of these sites, so there's water connections already there, electrical, gas connections that are all there that we're basically just plugging into. We did receive some comments from the planning department, and we responded to those comments. We provided a supplemental letter with some answers to those items and some additional drawings. We anticipate incorporating those into a final set of plans once we can get, we actually have additional comments from the DPW as well that we just received today. We anticipate incorporating those into a final set of drawings as well prior to getting a building permit.
Can you talk about when you're on that site plan, one of the issues was bike storage?
Sure.
Where, can you just show where that's incorporated?
Yeah, we would, we would basically anticipate putting some bicycle racks probably in this rear area here. Like I said, that's where visitors primarily, as well as the employees, would be parking, so essentially they, they could be leaving their bikes in a bike rack. This is kind of a plaza area, so to speak, in this area here, so we could utilize some of that space for some bicycle parking with some bike racks. One of the comments that we had received was regarding some of the lighting as well. We revised some of the lighting so that we're in compliance with the zoning ordinance, so it's a full cutoff fixture, and we're trying to, basically, we're, we needed to comply with the no more than five-foot candle, so we had to make some adjustments there to make that work, but that's all incorporated at this point now, so. Let me see. These are some images of the, this image on the top here, that's an elevation of the proposed building. These images here are an existing facility that the Grantham Group runs in Marlboro, Mass, but it's very similar architecture, materials, and so forth. But again, Clay Smook, the architect, is here as well, who could answer some questions on any of that. But we're hoping that tonight we can get an approval. Any outstanding items could be incorporated as a condition, and as I said, revise, provide revised plans in order to address all the comments prior to getting a building permit. Questions?
Comments from the DPW for those?
Yeah, I mean, I should probably read through those. A lot of them are technical, and they're just, they talk about plans that, plan details that need to be modified just to be consistent with other plans. DPW has already approved, given that this is a master-planned project, we've got ASBILs for some sections, and so they were just mostly about that. There were a couple of, which I think could easily just be incorporated as conditions. I can run through them. There are probably 10 or 15 that are really sort of minor plan detail changes, nothing major.
Yeah, they're all technical.
And then the other, the other issue, which is already in a proposed condition, is that they need to just close the loop on the stormwater. There's, there's an overall stormwater permit granted for the site, and this, there's some revised calculations that just need to be incorporated into the original stormwater permit, and that should be done prior to building permit, but I think that was already noted in the staff memo to you all. And then DPW also suggested modifying some locations of the proposed, two proposed red oak trees just to be at the, outside the drip line of impact with some of the infrastructure. So I think those, again, are minor. Other than that, there aren't really any, and then just notification that a stormwater pollution prevention plan is going to be required, a notice of intent with EPA for construction, but I think that's pretty standard, fair.
Over acre, so.
Yeah, yeah, right. And then, so that was that. And then the other issue I discussed with Doug McDonald this afternoon was related really to the design guidelines for Village Hill, related to infiltration, and there's a recommendation or encouragement that wherever possible, where soils can take it, that roof runoff should be infiltrated on-site instead of sending it to the detention ponds. And I don't know, I sent that comment to you earlier today, I don't know if you have any response to that, if that's feasible, instead of sending them to the ponds, if you can just infiltrate in that green space.
Well, the interesting thing about that is, is when we did go to the technical review committee meeting, we had intended, or we did show that we are considering an infiltration basin on-site. However, when we dove deeper into the basin information or drainage information that's already been constructed out there, we realized that Basin 3, which is to the, well, it's to the west, actually, I'll show you on that, yeah. to the west, actually, I'll show you on that. Yeah, so it's right, actually. Basin Three is actually this right here. Basin Three is actually an infiltration basin. So our runoff, as I mentioned, is getting collected from this parking area, as well as the roof runoff, and being piped over to Basin Three, and it is actually being infiltrated once it reaches Basin Three.
And that's about 75 or even greater percent of the entire site, right?
Yes.
Going over to that side?
Right.
Okay.
There is some interest by the applicant as well to do some possible rainwater harvesting, regurgitation, or whatnot, that could potentially reduce some of the runoff that's heading towards either of the basins. That's something that is being considered as well, but hasn't been.
Is there any, is there any action on trying to go for LEED certification, or have you thought about that? Because one of those might be, I mean, that might help in your certification process.
Good evening. I'm Paul Schumpert, capital advisors. We're consultants to the Grantham group project. Their LEED process as well. And the answer is, yes, we've already conducted a preliminary assess, LEED assessment for the project. And at the moment, we're, we're feeling pretty comfortable that LEED certified is very achievable for the project. And in the course of doing that, we're going to take advantage of, probably take advantage of the point for, for rainwater harvesting, as well as the, for the bicycle racks and showers. We're going to use that as, as well. So we'll, we'll be addressing a lot of those issues through our attempt to get to LEED certified.
Considering permeable pavement, or you've got a lot of, what, a third, you know, some quarter of the lot's paved?
You know, we haven't gone that, quite gotten quite that far into it yet. We've just done sort of a very preliminary assessment, and, you know, Davis just started to do the engineering. We haven't looked yet into the feasibility of permeable paving, but that's something we can certainly take a look at, sure.
Yeah, just question, so the location of the dumpster is on the side of the building where the employees parked, but I think the presentation is you have to walk all the way around the building to get in. Is there another exit or entrance on that side of the parking lot where people will be able to access the dumpster? Are they going to be dragging bags all the way around the building?
No, the, the main entrance to the building here, where visitors would be coming into. Employees primarily would probably be using a rear entrance right here. You can actually see, there's a set of stairs there, as well as there's a ramp that leads down to the lower level.
Yep.
And the employees that will be doing the, the cleaning and so forth will be able to remove some of that through this back entrance and then deposit in the dumpster area here.
What about loading area for, I mean, imagine you're going to get deliveries of food and other stuff. Where is that can be loaded in and out?
We anticipate a truck coming into this back parking lot area and doing whatever loading they need to do of just basic supplies, food, whatnot. Actually, how often do they come, do you know?
Once a week.
Once a week, so it's pretty minimal.
So we're not talking an 18-wheeler coming in? We're talking just a small?
Box truck.
Box truck?
Yep.
You're not allowing for any residential parking?
No, no, that will include the residential parking as well.
The 29 space?
29 space is typically in, in an assisted living of 83 units. If I have three or four residents that bring their car, that would be a lot.
Are you going to have to designate some of those spots as for deliveries?
Well, right, if you, I don't have a pointer, but, all right, thank you. They'll be right up here, up and, up close by where the, where the, where the delivery entry area is. But I see the drop-off in the, where the residents could be parking is right up and over here.
And you're going to have a nurse on staff, but you're not providing skilled nursing?
No skilled nursing care at all, but we will have 24-hour certified nursing assistants or home health aides that will be on staff, awake staff 24/7.
Will the residents be doing any cooking in the rooms?
Resident, they will have a microwave, they will not have a stove top. There will be country kitchens where they could use a stove top if they had, if they chose to.
I'm sure what a country kitchen is.
It's a, it's a dining room.
Oh, so they could, not within their room?
Not within their room. They will have a microwave in their room, so they could, you know, heat up soup or popcorn or something of that nature.
Right.
But any, any cooking that they actually wanted to do would have to be in a common area, in, in that dining room atmosphere.
Will there be some kind of a room that could be used by neighborhood association or rented?
That very question. It wouldn't be rented. It would be, what we would do is on the first floor, which, right over in here is all common space area, and over in here as well. And those areas will be, you know, can be used by the Village Hill Association as well. The average room will hold up around 30 people or so, just to kind of give you an idea. It's our main activity room when we bring in outside entertainment, have a exercise class or program. That's where we typically have it, is right downstairs in that area. It's actually quite typical. We run four other assisted livings within Massachusetts, similar types of concept. And it's beautiful, because the community is able to, to use this space that we have as well. And our residents, being part of the community, get the benefit of having something in their homes, so.
And these will be rental units?
Rental units, correct. Strictly monthly rentals.
The way the, I'm looking at the planting plan, as well as the driveways and parking, and it doesn't look like you're going to have anywhere to push snow. It looks like the driveways, I'm sorry, the, the parking lots are pretty much planted on, around all the borders. So you're going to be pulling or hauling the snow off?
Yeah, we could, we could haul the snow off. That's not a problem. Typically, in our buildings, we do get a contract to be able to take away snow as well.
Well, because I can't, I can't see where you'd push it.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't see, unless you took up parking?
Parking spaces to be able to do so.
Right. And in the front, where the turnaround is, there's nowhere to push it, so I don't see how you're going to get away without having to truck the snow off.
Yep. We are, and one of our buildings is right in downtown Otabar. We have the same issue, and with the snowplow company that we use, we do have it trucked away when it becomes overabundance of it.
Well, I guess that's why my point, overabundance is going to be any, because I, I don't see anywhere for you to push snow.
Right.
So I, I, I'm not sure if we want to make a condition, but that there's no, no storage on-site, but I, without taking up either parking or parts of the streets, there's just nowhere to put it.
I don't think you really need to make it a condition. I think it's going to be self-enforcing. They can't put it on the bike path, they can't put it.
Yeah, you can't put it in the bike path. On top of the detention pond.
That's green space in the corner, but, you know, it is landscape.
It's all planted.
Right.
Everything's pretty much planted, so, okay.
I mean, it's, it's comparable to downtown, so.
Right, I just hate to come up and see the new plantings covered in snow piles.
I'd have to replant this thing, that's a, that's pretty expensive.
Is there some kind of shared parking? Did I see that? Was that a different project?
Well, with the Mail Attendants, there's shared access. Is that what yours?
I didn't know whether it was just a shared, it's just the access.
Well, are they going to have to grant an easement to that parcel as part of this?
Yeah, because you don't want any more curb cuts on Village Hill Road. But I, I recommended that in the staff conditions, that, that be recorded before construction starts, so that it's clear that there's shared access.
So that's going to be the entrance for any parking for the Mail Attendants Building down the road? That, the area that shows parking in front of the Mail?
I don't know what the future layout for the parking is. There may be some other arrangements, as secondary arrangements for that parking. But at this time, what's in front of you is the potential for accessing parking from the site, from the same driveway curb cut.
Right. I just hate to think that, in any way, paving the entire front of the Mail Attendants Building to put in parking like it shows on that diagram.
Right, but it also goes into the backside, too. So, yeah, I mean, you, you have to approve.
Right.
Whether that parking goes there or not.
Okay.
Just an observation that often the people that are visiting people in assisted living, which are often elders, are also elders themselves, and it seems a very long way to walk from that parking lot to the front door.
I typically see adult children that do. So what they'll do is they'll dock, drop off the resident in this area here, and then pull around to the side to be able to park here, and then cut through where the bike path is. That's the benefit of having that here, and our entrance is only right here.
But they could be elders themselves.
Sure.
So it just seems a long way to walk to ask someone who's coming to visit.
Right, but there are, Stu, you got to remember as well, there are, there is some, which I know is minimal, but there is some parking that's up front as well.
Any other questions? Open up the public. So anyone here from the public who wants to weigh in on this project? Nobody? Okay.
So has, DPW has signed off, so?
Would it make sense to come up with the conditions before we close the public hearing? I'm just curious, in case somebody has to react to it.
Yeah, wouldn't hurt. Do you want to go?
Want me to go through the conditions that were in the staff memo?
Yep.
Okay. And then I'll, as I'm going through this, incorporate the comments from, it just came today from DPW, basically, details. Prior to issuance of building, sorry, let me just back up again. This is an issued plan approval, because the overall special permit for Village Hill has been approved, so this is really looking at the technical aspects of the use and whether the use is allowed. Prior to issuance of building permit, the following items shall be performed. The applicant shall finalize and revise plans to incorporate conditions herein, and changes made from the original filing, plan sets shall be delivered to the Office of Planning and Development. The applicant shall show proof of recording of shared access and drain adjacements for the driveway off Village Hill Road. It will be shared with Lot 112. An approval not required plan shall be submitted, endorsed, and recorded, changing the lot boundaries between Lot 110 and 112. The issue is the way that mass development originally configured the lots is slightly different than what's shown. The amended stormwater calculation shall be submitted to Department of Public Works for the overall North Hampton State Hospital permit. Plan changes shall include items identified in the Department of Public Works memo with regard to corrections to plan references and plan sheets. We didn't talk about this before, but it was in the staff comments that, about the Douglas fir surrounding the parking lot is quite a massive tree and might create areas where it may be harder to see through. And I think, given that it's on the bike path, that you should have visual penetration between the parking lot and the bike path. So Douglas fir surrounding the parking lot, my recommendation is that it should be replaced with lower-growth shrubs. The applicant may opt not to landscape the exterior, oh, and, or, you know, limb up those trees, so that could be an option. The applicant can opt not to landscape the exterior of the fence dumpster, because that's where a lot of the Douglas fir work is, and it's a priority fence, then it's screened. It may not be necessary. Final planting shall be shown on the revised plans. Tree planting detail in accordance with the city's tree specification shall be incorporated into the final plans. And then, street tree protection detail shall be incorporated into the final plans. That's for the existing street trees along Moser and Village Hill, because they were already planted, and the building is coming so close to the sidewalk there. Bike loops shall be incorporated into the final plan set, as discussed and presented. Any street trees along the property boundaries that are damaged during construction or show decline up to one year after a certificate of occupancy has been issued shall be replaced by the applicant in accordance with street trees and tree planting standards. And if the public sidewalk is damaged during construction, the applicant is responsible for repairing damage in accordance with Department of Public Works standards.
Any other, talk about snow removal, but we don't need to make that a condition?
Bike racks are in there.
Bike racks, sure. John? Any other conditions? Comments?
In absence of any other public comment, then I knew we closed the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Second, John? All in favor? Okay, so this is site plan. And you seem to have met everything. We've got eight to 10 conditions on top of that. Any other discussion?
When we did the office building that's at the end of Con Street, we put in rain catch basins in the parking lot.
That wasn't there for that? On Con Street?
That office building that's at the, at the hotel?
Oh, okay.
And I'm just, this is one big, open parking lot. Is there any interest in talking about that? Is, is that something we can't, is that?
Well, what would be?
I mean, that would provide, you know, someplace to store small amounts of snow. It would provide permeability. It would break up the parking lot. I don't know, I mean, they've optimized the space with every square inch, so I don't know if there's even a way to get any, you know, to keep their number of parking places and, and get any of that, just.
You're trying to, you're talking about infiltration? Is that what you're talking about?
In the parking.
Islands, earth and, you know, catch basin island in the parking.
I don't know that.
I mean, it's two rows, that's the standard, sort of, once you go beyond two, then you start talking about doing the islands.
That may be exactly what I'm.
And then I think the fact that it's surrounded by green, and that potentially they will be able to infiltrate some of the roof runoff addresses.
Pretty small parking lot.
I think if you added, you'd have to lose green to get green, you know? And the fact that they, they've got the basin across the street, they're dumping into the basin number threes. It seems like it's a tight, it's kind of a funky site, and the parking lot is small to begin with, and it's jammed in there. From a technical standpoint, I don't initiate that.
It's a lot better than Lot 19, though.
Yes. That's another discussion. Any other comments from anybody?
No.
No? Someone want to make a motion?
Fine. I move that we grant the request for site plan approval, major project by the Grantham Group to construct an 83-room, 58,000-square-foot assisted-living facility on Village Hill Road, North Hampton map ID 38A-110, with conditions as noted.
Second.
Second, Devin? All in favor? There you go. Thank you.
Okay, next up, I'd like to open up a request for site plan approval with parking deduction for expansion of parking facility for Clark School's Bell Hall at 47 Roundhill Road, North Hampton map ID 31B-64.
Hi, I'm Michael Lee with the Berkshire Design Group, representing Clark Schools. Bill Corwin is here tonight from Clark Schools, and also Richard Klein, the Berkshire Design Group. So Clark Schools is planning to consolidate its services to Bell Hall. Currently, in this aerial photo, this is Roundhill Road. Henshaw Avenue is down here, and the campus is on the north side, or west side, sorry, of Roundhill Road is the main campus. And on the east side here is Bell Hall, Hubbard, and Rogers. So this is Bell Hall, and this photo shows the rear. With the consolidation, Bell Hall would be occupying a separate new lot, which would be formed through the A&R process. There is currently, there is currently not enough parking at the facility to serve, you know, those needs. So this proposal is for a parking expansion at Bell Hall, and we're also asking for a 20% reduction in the parking requirements. I'm just going to flip through these pretty quickly. I know you said we should try to get through this. But these are just some photos of the front of the current building, Bell Hall, from the front. Couple of shots around the side and the rear of Bell Hall. If you're familiar with it, there's a small play area on the, on the hillside in the back, and then it slopes down to pretty much an open, kind of an open, I guess, recreation field, if you will, going toward Henshaw Avenue. This aerial view shows, in red, the current east side of Clark School's property in red. And this yellow line represents the proposed lot that would be cut out for the Bell Hall facility, or the new Bell Hall consolidation. I'm not going to bother with that one, that was just a neighborhood abutters map. Now, this is the plan that was previously approved as part of the overall Clark Schools campus improvement, which included some additional parking and driveways, et cetera. I'm not going to bother with that one, that was just a neighborhood, a butter's map. Now, this is the plan that was previously approved as part of the overall Clark Schools' campus improvement, which included some additional parking and driveways, et cetera. What this plan shows is that this parking lot here, in the rear of Bell Hall, what that, how that was configured. On this plan, we've overlaid the proposed property line shown here in the heavy line. And I want you to take note of, you know, where the parking came down at this northerly, northeastern corner here, compared with what we're proposing now in 2012 with the property line. The parking has been pulled back. There's been an overall reduction in the amount of pavement for the project. We do have, according to the use schedule, we are required to have 80, what was it, 89 spaces. With the 20% reduction of 17 spaces, we, is that right? I know that we have, we need 71 spaces total. Now, 71 spaces is going to be made up of these new spaces in the back, 43 spaces, and existing eight spaces out front here with two additional spaces added to the side. And then Clark Schools has off-site, by right-of-way easement on Smith College property here, 18 spaces. So that totals 71. This proposal will complete a drainage system that was designed to handle stormwater that would have treated this amount of pavement. Since we're reducing the amount of pavement by some 1,500 square feet, we've contacted Doug McDonald and the city's stormwater coordinator and sent him the revised plans, and we've conversed with him, and he's satisfied that if we build a storm system as designed for the 2005 facility, it obviously will, should handle the stormwater from the current proposal, which is a reduction in pavement, as I mentioned. We just got an email from Doug this afternoon. Carolyn, I don't know if you got that, but amended stormwater permit. We requested an amended stormwater permit from the approved 2005 stormwater permit, and with some data that was sent to him, he issued an amended stormwater permit. So I think that's taken care of. We do have to record the operation and maintenance agreement. That was also received today, and we'll fill that out and have the owner review it, have Doug give the final review before that document is prepared and sent to the mayor for signature and then recorded. And I'm just going to basically end with this slide that kind of shows Bell Hall, then the paved areas, and then all the green and these walkways as open. And I'm going to just open it up to any comments from the board at this point.
Can you just walk me through again the 18 spaces that you have by easement? How do you physically get that?
Well, currently, there's a walkway that kind of, it's a very steep walkway that goes down the hill, basically from where you exit the building up here in existing conditions and walk down the hill. You can see remnants of that walk here. It would have extended up the hill, roughly in this location. Now, if anybody uses these 18 off-site spaces, they would have to kind of walk up through this driveway and up this staircase that were, is part of the proposal, and then into the building. Now, I do want to mention that the easement and right-of-way is a vehicular parking and pedestrian easement. So that runs from Roundhill Road all the way down through here, includes these spaces, and then comes out to Henshaw. And I did include a slide for reference of the survey, and if you can kind of see, parking areas here, if you can see that hatched area, that's indicated, that's the parking and pedestrian easement that's been granted by Smith after Clark School. So I'm not sure exactly if these 18 spaces are used very often by Clark. You know, obviously, it's kind of in a, in a area that's, you know, below the building, but they are there for Clark's use. And from what I understand, that the, some of the offices that Clark has are actually in Tilly Hall, which is right here. So I guess that space is leased, and then, you know, those personnel use these spaces, you know, that are in that parking lot.
So does that mean they're Smith's spaces, but you have access to them?
That's correct. It's Smith property with an easement to Clark School for that use.
Does that mean that Smith has access to them as well?
I don't know. Smith is, does not have access to the spaces.
So if you're not using them, they're empty?
That's correct. I actually think there's a little trading back and forth that happens, but from what I see, that those spaces don't ever seem to be fully used.
Are they somehow marked that say parking for Clark School only?
I don't think there's signs there, actually. Are there signs? Okay. I'm sorry, there are signs. And those spaces are numbered on the pavement as well. There's other spaces you see in these unhatched areas, those are for Smith use. There's also signs, I think they park, what are those, those cars?
Zip cars.
They park zip cars there. Down in this lower lot, they park, Smith parks vans that the school uses. So Smith does use portions of those lots, but from what I understand, I don't think that they ever use any of the lots that are designated in this, on the northern end of that lower lot.
What's Tilly Hall going to be used for? It's not part of the law.
No, it isn't. It's currently, is it shared right now, or is it just for, yeah, is it just Clark use?
It's Clark's office, owned by Smith.
We leased that from Smith, and our business office is.
There are nine spaces that we get with that on that.
Oh, okay, so you also have access to these, which are not in that, I guess, with the rental of Tilly Hall. Clark is also, has access to those as well.
Questions from the board?
They need a stormwater permit first.
They needed, they needed an amendment, right.
An amended permit from the previously approved?
That's correct. Right.
And there were some DPW comments as well.
You got those as far?
Yeah, I mean, some of them I included in the staff report about state, excuse me, slope stabilization on the backside, because the grades are so severe. And then there were other questions about DPW, and I think noted in my staff report about the retaining wall. Can you describe that a little bit? It looked on the, on the plans that there was an existing retaining wall that was being partially covered and.
This, down at the lower end of the site here, there's the remnants of a foundation. And I'm not sure what that building was in the past, but it's a concrete foundation, and the slope from this parking lot would come down, and we're proposing just to leave that concrete foundation in place and kind of bury this end right there, so.
It's not a retaining wall, then?
It's not a retaining wall. It's just an old foundation. And it's actually, you know, there's a, you know, if you stand on top of it, there's like a two and a half feet drop-off of it. So it's, I'm not sure if it's going to go down there at this point, but it's really kind of an unused area. And rather than just, you know, trying to save a little money by leaving it alone.
Do you want to talk about, Carolyn, you had a note in the staff report about proposed, this traffic statement says there will be an overall reduction in traffic?
Right.
How was that going to come about?
Well, I saw that comment, and I think you might have misinterpreted the response. What that comment said is there would be an overall reduction in the flow of traffic throughout the neighborhood, because right now, cars are, you know, would come up the hill and pass this site and keep going north and go to Hubbard and Rogers, as well as turning in to go to the west side of the campus. With Clark School consolidating to one building, essentially, you know, traffic's going to be limited to coming up and going into this driveway or this driveway. So the cars that used to go beyond this site and continue through the neighborhood street to other buildings, you know, that's not going to occur anymore. So I think that's what the response meant in the application, not that there was a reduction in the amount of traffic.
Is it realistic? Grant 20% drop in the priority parking, and also they have 18 spaces that nobody's going to use. Is there going to be enough with 53 spaces? Is that realistic?
I don't think that, you know, I think, there could be two things, and the applicant can, or Mike can describe, but once the consolidation happens, parking won't be happening elsewhere, so people may in fact start using that lower lot. I think the, there's no other place to park, there's no other spill-over effect, essentially, because, and I think, you know, like in some of the other districts in the city, you have accommodated folks saying, this is what our, this is what our demand is, so this is, these are only the number of spaces we need. I think that's sort of what's being shown here. The parking lot was bigger in the first iteration, they've reduced that. So presumably, they could go back to that original expanded parking lot, but there's no need to do that, which is why they're asking for the 20% reduction. So I don't see that really as an issue. There'll be more green space in this scenario, and given that there's already accessible parking on the adjacent lot, I don't.
Is that in fact the case? You don't need the spaces?
Well, Clark has produced a memo stating, you know, with a count, that basically says they need about 59 or 60 spaces. So there might be a few extras in this proposal. But I think that it's not, I mean, we're asking for the 20, I think zoning does allow us to ask for a bigger reduction.
Right, you can ask for more with a special permit.
Right.
20% is sort of the threshold between site plan and special.
I don't think that's such a bad idea, because as it is right now, people do pull up and park on the street. And with this parking facility in the back, I think that, once people know it's there, it's going to encourage people not to pull, stop at the curb, if you will, and maybe they'll pull in and get off the street, and that's always a good idea.
So the original 89 is based on the square footage of the building? And what they've done is actually determined the use of the building once you're consolidated?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone from the public to talk about this specific item? Okay, ma'am.
Yeah.
If you could come up to the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Sarah Metcalf. I live in the neighborhood, and I'm actually here primarily to comment on the other site plan for the campus, but there's an issue that's kind of common to the two of them, and that's pedestrian rights of way. We've been looking very closely at the anticipated increased traffic up Roundhill Road, and a large group of neighbors are very concerned with preserving existing pedestrian paths that will help to reduce the load of traffic up and down Roundhill Road. And there's a very much-used path currently that goes from Roundhill Road on this map to the right of Bell Hall and goes down to that lower parking lot and exits onto Henshaw. And it looks as though, basically, that path disappears, and that the only way a pedestrian can now walk through in wintertime, when things would be snow-covered, would be down a driveway, where, you know, there's nothing devoted to a pedestrian, it would be, you know, in traffic. I mean, I think that's a pretty, a pretty unattractive option. And so I'm just wondering if this plan could conceivably be amended in such a way as to create a pedestrian path that would continue to lead down around, kind of to the right side, from Roundhill Road and exit out at its current exit point down into that lower lot that belongs to Tilly Hall. You know, because a very direct and appealing and much-used and well-maintained and beautifully cleared sidewalk has, I guess, been eliminated now. And then the other thing that I just would like to comment on is that currently, this is an area that has a lot of pretty beautiful trees, including a really large oak, which I think is slated to come down for this parking lot. And it's, and it's one of those trees that was donated by some people at Clark. It has a little commemorative placard on it. It's, you know, a 44-inch diameter tree. Just wonder if it's in any way possible to, you know, skirt around that, or, you know, I mean, it's the single most notable tree that apparently is going to be sacrificed for pavement here. But there are a number of other very beautiful trees that are coming down, and then, you know, I'm not exactly sure that I see where the landscaping that's plotted here is going to replace any of those. And that would be a shame, because right now, it's a very beautiful area.
Want to speak to any of that?
I'm not sure if I have any comments. I'm not, I think I might disagree with the pedestrian access, which would go down along the north side of Bell Hall. It seems like you have to cross an open field to get to Henshaw. There's no paved access.
No, believe me, there's, there are paths now. I walk them daily.
Rick Klein, Berkshire. I think historically, Clark has been nice enough to let people walk across the property, even with liability issues and school children and so on. Clark has, as you know, was consolidating quite a bit, and not really shoehorning into the site, but trying to really consolidate down to the bare bones. And with the slopes that are there, trying to put a new sidewalk that would be ADA compliant is really difficult. And the thought was that there still is that easement up through Tilly, through Clark, and that's plowed, and so on. And so, you know, that's the logistical way for people to get from one road to the next.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we can put, make a private owner put a public sidewalk through their property so that the neighbors can walk across. I don't think we can, that's not something we can even do.
But that being said, you're saying in the end, there'll still be a paved, it's vehicular and pedestrian access that will be presumably paved, so there would be access from?
That's correct. The driveway to the left of Tilly there will be, is plowed.
So you could pop out at Henshaw along a paved route the whole way?
Sure.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I would just say that, I've crossed 87 Roundhill Road, so I live very close to this. I would just say that, you know, I don't know what the solution is, but the pavement piece, it's dangerous. You know, I have two small kids that do walk that exact route. And you're right, it's the generosity of Clark School that we have access to that. But I have to say that the solution's saying, well, there is a pedestrian vehicles and pedestrians. I'm not sure what Clark School's going to do about their own pedestrians, you know, because it doesn't sound like it's super safe for them either, but just saying that, well, you know, kids are still going to walk down there. So the solution isn't to ignore it and say, well, it's not going to happen. It's going to happen. And I just think that that should maybe get a little bit of thought, because, you know, even if it is a pedestrian or paved, somewhere distinguishing where cars go and children go isn't crazy. So that's my two cents.
Okay. Yep.
And I have a question about the parking area in front of Bell Hall. I don't know if the addition of the two spaces means that Clark anticipates more clients for the hearing center. My concern is that all these service vehicles that come to Bell Hall park on the road right now, rather than coming into the parking area. These are the growing FedEx trucks and the growing UPS trucks. Often, they park along the curb, obstructing traffic, especially traffic that's trying to come north on Roundhill Road. Then there are the big Poland Spring trucks. The other day, there was a semi. The other day there was a semi. It's not the first time I've seen a semi parked out there. And I wondered if any consideration has been given to some sort of a service entrance where these vehicles can park. And I do have another concern I would just like to point out briefly, and that is that the exit from the parking area, again, the bell in the front, is exactly opposite the exit from the west side of the Clark School. Soon that will be the only entrance exit for the majority of the vehicles that will be going into and coming out from the new development. And it is less than fifty feet from a drive that is shared by five residential units. And were the park drive a city street as opposed to a private way? The distance from the drive would have to be fifty feet. It is currently forty-two. Because there are problems with turning around in that shared drive, you see these huge oil trucks that have to back in. And also vehicles go in there and end up backing out. And I just would like to point that out as a potential problem. And certainly with the increase in traffic, it is an accident ready. Thank you.
Anybody else? Discussion?
I mean, I think we've talked about, as far as them to put in a public path, so I'm just not sure if that's, you know, what we're going to do about that. And I think the idea of the service vehicles parking at the street, I'm not sure what that's, I'm not sure if we have purview to tell FedEx they can't park in the street. That's just where people park when they're making deliveries. It happens in front of every house that I know of.
Downtown, too.
Happens downtown. Try to go around Thorns when somebody's, you know, parked in front of Thorns. So I just, I don't, you know, it's kind of, we don't really have the purview to tell FedEx they can't park in the street.
Well, there's some possibility that the parking lot behind it will be, it's obviously closer to the building than the street, so that could go in exactly the other direction from that. They could be encouraged to come down in there to drop off. I'm, I'm concerned about the idea that, that they are claiming the spaces that Smith has. I'm being told those aren't being used. I mean, they could very easily be, you know, Smith can reconfigure in a way that uses those spaces. So the, the eighteen spaces by easement are being counted with this building, and yet they are available to another facility. And they aren't providing a very convincing access point for pedestrians to get to those places if they are going to use them.
That, that I think is a good, that it's because the existing plan does show a way to get there by crossing the path and up.
Could I clarify that?
Yeah.
The eighteen spaces that are there by easement are, they belong to Smith College. They're on Smith College property. They're wholly for the use of Clark School. If Clark does not want to use them, they sit empty waiting for Clark to use them. Smith will not use them.
What would happen if Smith developed the need to use them?
They would have to actually negotiate with Clark to buy them back essentially.
Easements for forever, isn't it?
That's correct. As long as Clark occupies that lot and has a property line contiguous to those eighteen spaces, those eighteen spaces and the easement to get back and forth between Henshaw and Round Hill Road are deeded to Clark by easement.
Well, it gets back to Devin's point, though, is there a way to provide a better access point from those eighteen spaces to Bell Hall without having to walk up in front of Tilly and across them?
It's, it's a stairway to get from the curved, the curved entrance in the lower left-hand side. It's pretty steep down to those spaces.
Right, so I think, I think the thought is, correct, to come up here and then up those stairs.
Right up the stairs.
Yeah.
But there's no way to come out the right side of those eighteen spaces where the path goes, comes, shows coming down to Henshaw? It's really steep.
Right, the grades.
Is it that steep?
Dramatic there, isn't it?
Yeah.
It'd be continual stairs.
That's part of the problem with pedestrians being there because as cars come up that driveway, it's not easy to see. And I just think if you force kids to walk down, because the main issue why kids go there, Smith College Campus School. You know, because anyone that lives up there ends up walking down there to access Smith College Campus School. And there are other places where they walk, but this is also, you know, one of them. And most, most people are walking on the right-hand side of Bell Hall. There is paths.
No, I'm kind of stymied with Steve. You can't, you can't require those right-hand pathways to stay there.
Right, no.
And they can. The other thing is, is that, and, and they, you know, they, they could still be used like that. I mean, if Clark so wanted them to be.
If they, I'm sorry, what was, if, if Clark wanted?
Well, I mean, it's an informal neighborhood arrangement right now that you could say possibly could exist in the future, but I don't think we have any way to ensure that.
I mean, we cannot require someone to allow the public to cross over the property. It's happened to Cole Morgan, it's happened in other places. It's not something we can do.
Does, does Tilly have a sidewalk in front? Like from the park, parking lot in the?
From the driveway to the door.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're struggling with the issue there.
Can I make a comment?
Yep, come on up.
I'm not terribly concerned about this personally since I don't use that path and I don't have.
Could you name please?
Pardon me, Richard Green, eighty-eight Round Hill Road. I'm here for the Opal Site Plan, but I'm not familiar with Massachusetts law on easements, but in other states, if a path has been used for a certain amount of time, people have a legal right to continue to use it. That might be a possibility.
Okay, well, let me, just talk me through this one more time. So the eighteen spaces down here, could their ADA accessible by virtue of the road back up and around that enters the parking lot area?
That I don't know if they're ADA accessible.
I don't think with the grade, the existing, that's existing grade, and I think it's such that it's not.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, there's handicap parking in the front, where the eight, where it says eight existing spaces. There's two handicap spaces up there.
Okay.
And then there are, in the lower area, there are none. I don't believe there are any handicap spaces in the lower area. So the only handicap spaces are the ones in front of the building.
No, I think we did add, I think there's a couple of handicap spaces.
Are there two in the bottom? Am I just missing? Oh, actually, there's a better picture.
Yeah, there's two.
Oh, yeah, there's two right across from the entrance. So there's two more down in the lower area.
Yeah. Sorry? How do you get to any?
Nicholas Groth, OPLS. I just want to say that. And with the Opal project, there are many projects that may have to be.
See how steep that is?
Yeah, that's what I was, I was headed to say, could put stairs there. But that's still pushing. I move we close public comment. I move we close public comment.
Second, Stephen. Killian, want to go through the conditions from staff?
So we talked about slope stabilization should be included for all slopes of three to one or greater, and that was in the DPW comments. Annual stormwater management agreement must be in place in accordance with the original permit. This will need to be finalized, signed, and recorded prior to commencement of work. All, and DPW's, Doug McDonald also sort of reiterated that in their, in their review. All easements for off-site drainage will need to be in place before commencement of work. There are two areas that the applicant didn't talk about, but one, they're both sort of, one's a historic line that goes south towards Henshaw across that property, and then the other is what will potentially be the future Opal property for Hubbard and Rogers. There's a drainage area there. So those need to be finalized and recorded before work is done. And DPW recommends that ADA requirements for tactile warning strips on that ramp going into the back building should be incorporated in the design. And that's it.
Comments? I think that, you know, our, this was approved before, and now it's coming in front of us again, reduced parking. And the comments about pedestrian access are valid, but they're not for us, I don't think, enforceable. Might be good practice for Clark, if this work was done, to find a way to make the situation better. Same thing with service vehicles up front. That's, I don't, we can't make that a condition, but if Clark makes it a condition, then they can come around in the back or something. So I think we're limited as to what we can and cannot condition.
Well, and if this were a developer telling me what the parking requirements would be and they were proposing a twenty percent reduction, I would, I would be more concerned about it. But this is the user itself who has every incentive to have the right amount of parking for their function. So I have some confidence in, in the fact that they've, they've gone about trying to figure that out.
Yeah, and when I think about the pedestrian path, every building that ever been built used to have a path on it. So to say that historically any parcel that had a path on it has to have a path on it in perpetuity, it just doesn't fly, so.
Do I hear motion?
I move we approve the request for site plan approval for parking reduction for expansion of parking facility for Clark School Bell Hall at forty-seven Round Hill Road, North Hampton, map ID three-one B dash sixty-four, with conditions as noted.
Second.
Second, Stephen. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, it's ten after nine. I'd like to open up a request for site plan approval to convert historical educational buildings to residential and mixed office use and a special permit for reduction in parking for property at Clark School, Round Hill Road, North Hampton, map ID thirty-one B dash four-six. And we've got a presentation.
All right, hello, my name is Darren Gray from Doucette and Associates, assistant attorney, representing the Opal Group. Also here tonight, we have Dimitris Paliantakis with the Opal Group. I got it?
No, you murdered it.
Sorry. Dan Dodge with the Opal Group, Tom Hogan with Doucette and Associates, Sean Kelly with Van Ass, a traffic engineer, also Mike Sidel, attorney. I'm going to hand it off to Dimitris, the guys rolling here.
It's, it's almost nine thirteen, so I'll be brief. Opal Real Estate Group is presently committed to five historic preservation projects in Western Mass. Completed projects include the Holyoke Intermodal in coordination with Holyoke Community College and Public Transit, a firehouse redevelopment and preservation in the center of Holyoke, Westfield State Training School, which was delivered September second, which is the previous Westfield Courthouse, and will serve as residential units for Westfield State University. We are presently the preferred developer in executing an LDA on the Court Street Hotel in Springfield, Massachusetts, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand square foot mixture use project. And we are participating as a main stakeholder, Union Station Development in Springfield. And our most ambitious project, I believe, Clark School, which we want to start calling Historic Round Hill Summit, as an identified name for the project. The Clark School Development and approximately nine point eight acres of what we consider some of the most historically significant land and buildings in Massachusetts, and I would dare say the, the country. We have completed our historic tax application to Mass Historic Commission with the assistance of the Development Department and the North Hampton Historic Commission, which supported our project to the commission. It is under review with Mass Historic and National Park Service presently. We have spent a great deal of time, almost twelve months now, kind of honing down what this development's going to look like. It's gone through many changes. We've worked very diligently with Mayor's Office, development personnel, the North Hampton Historic Commission, Round Hill Neighborhood Representatives, and our partner, the Clark School, to present this to you this evening. If I have one message from Opal Real Estate Group and its principal, Peter Picnelli, is that this is a historic preservation in every sense of the word, inside and outside. Our intent is minimal to zero impact on surrounding open land, minimal to zero impact on existing vegetation and the look from the curb. As you will hear tonight, we have also agreed to terms with the city for a permanent historic designation of the site. With that, I'll turn it over to our team and let them begin.
I'll start off here with an overview map of the entire site, just to get everyone located here. The Westfield side of the campus is over here, and it's bounded by Bancroft to the west and Round Hill Road. The westly side of the campus is over here and it's bounded by Bancroft to the west and Roundhill Road comes through the middle of the site. Then Henshaw is down below. And the eastly side of the campus, here's Bell Hall, which Michael just presented, this is the Locksings, I've divided off. And over here is the Smith, Smith College area with that easement they were discussing. You know, one of the interesting things about this project and something kind of ironic, you consider how old the campus is and it's a redevelopment project, but you know, it really adheres a lot to the components of low-impact development, which is very, you know, modern day current concept. You know, we're hoping to have some work, live tenants here, it's got dense housing and a walkable downtown area, access to public transit. We're very limiting, we're very much limiting the impact to impervious. We're installing a rain garden, which is compliant with DEP standards for low-impact stormwater design. Inherent improvements to the neighborhood as we're here with the offsite mitigation package as proposed. And also, obviously, as Dimitris was saying, the very limited impact, you know, obviously no sprawl effect here. We're really looking to minimize impacts. You know, in line with the historic preservation, the exterior of these existing buildings will remain. They're not proposing any modifications, no major site work. You know, we'll go through it all in detail here, but it's all pretty minimal and to enhance safety and circulation and very minor adjustments for parking. And again, just one of the core values of this project is maintaining that historic character here on site. And we have worked very closely with the Office of Planning and Development with our submittal package and the calculations and also with DPW Engineering and Stormwater Group, Doug McDonald. We got our notification that our waiver was approved today from the Stormwater Group and also the Engineering Group. It appears we have a general consensus on the direction of the mitigation package and how that'll all be put into effect. And one of the more complicated things about this project is that it's going to be a phased renovation. And so what Opel Group did early on here, as they were looking at this project, was to do a conceptual analysis on the inside of the buildings. You know, this is a very atypical office space we're talking about here, obviously historic renovation is educational buildings. And they don't lend themselves to the most efficient use of space as if you're doing a ground up on an empty site or something. You know, so they went through these buildings, you know, floor by floor, piece by piece, to evaluate what would be required for life safety and access and what could actually be used for office space. And I'll get into that in more detail, but that's, that's really a driving factor behind a lot of this when you start talking about the parking reduction. And again, with the parking reduction is the historic preservation on this, this lot. As you look at the overall site map, you see a lot of green space here, which we're proposing not to impact. And you know, so we're really hoping to just maintain parking with some slight enhancements, adding it where we can with limited impact. But let's get into the details a little bit here. So this slide zooms in on the westly side of the campus. So again, Roundhill Road, Bancroft up here. The buildings that are proposed to be renovated as part of this project have Gayworth Hall, Adams, Coolidge and Skinner. Those are all going to be redeveloped as mixed use and approximate split of 80% professional offices and 20% of, it's defined in the zoning as medical, dental, what I deem like a high-traffic office where you see as a primary, part of your business, you see clients. It's also proposed to have a daycare element on site. That's the only really deviation from the 80/20 split that's provided in the submittal calculations. The other buildings on site, we have Galbraith Gymnasium, we have Boiler Room, the Engineer's House and the Maintenance Garage. Those are all proposed to stay as they are, support buildings, accessory. And it's important to note with the gymnasium too, that that's in no way going to be used, you know, for membership jam or anything like that. That is, you know, as an amenity to the remainder of the project.
Could you clarify the 80/20 again?
Oh, sure. Well, we went through the calculations for this project, you know, specifically, you know, for the peak hour trips and for the parking requirements. You know, we had to project what the breakdown of uses would be in these buildings. And since, you know, they're not leased yet, it's all a projection of what could happen out there. And with the zoning amendment in this past spring for historic reuse of historic educational building, it allows for up to a 20% medical, dental or high-traffic office use. And also, I believe, it also introduced even the professional office because this used to be just, you know, residential. And so in order to give Opel Group, you know, flexibility as they go forward with their leasing, what we assumed here was a 20% of that more high-usage or high-traffic, if you will, office space and 80% of the professional office. Whereas professional offices, you know, the primary function of the office is not to see clients all the time. But you know, it's more of a secondary function. And so in order to project forth some numbers here so we could, you know, develop these parking numbers and the peak hour trips, we had to start somewhere and we started with the numbers that were provided in zoning and also based them off of, you know, those early on conceptual analyses of the buildings when Opel went through and took a look at what percentage could be leased on each, each floor. And that's the basis of the calculations for the parking reduction and the peak hour trips.
So it's 80/20 divided between two types of commercial use?
Yes.
But it's 100% commercial use?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah, I mean, as we're advised, you know, it's mixed use, we're not anticipating any residential on the westly side of the campus. You know, but. It's a good question.
The residential on that side, the historic, we are only applying to the National Park Service on two buildings. We had a preliminary determination by National Park and Masses Dorrit. We had asked if we could apply to the campus as a whole, so it would be one submission for the entire project. That was denied, they felt that each building had very different individual characteristics historically and some of the buildings predating the Clark School, that all of the submissions needed to be individual. So yeah, we kind of had the same response. The problem being though, that the, the effort, the time and the difficulty of doing them individually is just a mountain of work. So we focused the initial submissions for Mass Historic and National Park Service on the, the, the two buildings that we wanted to use the residential. It had the highest density of residential and we felt were the most amendable to, to that. And our big problem inside of these buildings is that despite the square footage number, it is a tremendous, almost 40 or above percent common area. So these buildings have, are very difficult to adapt and because of historic, whether now or later, we cannot touch hallways. So that is an absolute no.
Speaking of those residential buildings, the east side of the campus. We have Rogers Hall and Hubbard Hall. These are currently projected to be just fully residential with 38 units overall. And that's really this side of the campus what the, the plan is here. There are some site improvements, which I'll run through in the next slide. This is, let me try to zoom in a little bit here. So as I've been mentioning, there's not a lot of site improvements proposed. What are proposed are for, you know, safety, circulation. So I'm going to try to zoom in a little here as I go through. But up, up here is Coolidge and we're proposing a drop-off area here. I believe it's a 12-foot wide drive aisle with a three-foot striped area and a sidewalk. We made sure to oversize the drive aisle and provide that extra striped area just to be sure for safety. We, we've adjusted the extent of this drive aisle to pull away from some of the larger trees down here at the base. So we have adjusted this design, it connects up to an existing sidewalk. We're also proposing five bike racks throughout the campus. We have one here at Coolidge, we have one over here at Skinner, one at Galbraith. There's an existing one at Gayworth and then two for the residential side, one in the front and one in the back. As far as parking adjustments go, zoning doesn't allow for back-to-back parking for residential use. So we're able to squeeze it in on the east side of the campus here, to the north of Rogers Hall. Went back-to-back, there's existing nine spaces, we went eight back-to-back for a total of 16. And also the access aisle here was only wide enough for one-way traffic. So we widening that up to allow for double and, you know, increasing the radii slightly. And going over the other side of the campus. Again, I mentioned the rain garden earlier and up here at the Coolidge drop-off, that's really the only significant area that's being added to the site. To accommodate any additional stormwater runoff, we have a 100, a rain garden proposed for this area. And it handles the 100-year storm design per DEP guidance, that low-impact stormwater design practice. Sorry to keep moving it around everyone, I'm just trying to zoom into everyone can see here. Behind Gayworth, we're just looking at adjusting the curb line slightly to add in five more spaces. North of, sorry, they said be west of Adams, we're adding in two more spaces. Again, when we add in these spaces, we're only doing this in areas where it's immediately accessible and available space. We're not pulling in any drive aisles and putting new parking areas anywhere. Again, maintaining the historic character of this campus. And again, over here, adding two, which is just adding those in there. And behind Skinner, there are three new spaces proposed and that's just simply a matter of restriping to get those in there. Also, which is considered onsite improvements by zoning ordinance, by planning, is new granite curbing along the frontage for the parcels. So that's going to be included and I believe also that the restriping of the crosswalks is included is onsite. And so that, that really summarizes the onsite improvements for the project. We'll get into the offsite, which judging from some of the comments I heard, I think some of the neighbors will be happy about. But now, moving on to the, let me just check my notes here, make sure I didn't miss anything on you, but. Moving on to the, the calculations for the project, I, you know, they were pretty in-depth, detailed and for me painful. But I do want to talk about the general sense to, to again, just further explain the methodology behind the calculations that are the basis for the parking reduction requests and also for the, the traffic mitigation fee. I spoke earlier, and so did Dimitris, about how Opel went through and evaluated these buildings and found there's a lot of space that couldn't be used. Just can't touch the hallways, life safety and just the inherent inefficiencies with the reuse of these historic buildings. But zoning ordinance requires all calculations be done according to gross building square footage. So our traffic calculations or traffic reports are all done with, based on gross building areas. And our traffic engineer will get into that more closely. But so are our parking numbers and also the peak hour trips, which are done per equations in the zoning ordinance based on gross area. Now, so to summarize it quickly, we send, we evaluated the numbers based on gross area. And then in working with the planning department, we developed equations to apply reductions to more accurately represent what is expected from this campus. On the westly side, we're looking at only about 63% utilization of the gross building area, for instance. And so we were able to apply a reduction and then also we, we applied a factor of safety on that of 12% to bump it back up, make sure we're accommodating what's required by zoning. The ITE Trip Generation Handbook states that on average for office building, you have a 12% just accessory use. You know, your hallways, your mechanical and that sort of thing. So we applied that back in, after we put our reduction in, we added some back in to make sure we're, you know, being consistent with what's expected of a current day office building. And, you know, from that, we developed, oops, developed our trips. And, you know, again, we're going through this, the reduction and some important things to note about the site are that obviously with the residential on the east side and then the commercial or office on the west, we have staggered peaks. You know, as people are leaving in the morning to go to work, other folks are arriving to their jobs on the west side of the campus and vice versa in the evening commute. So we do have the staggered peaks, which is specifically mentioned in the zoning ordinance. Obviously, this site is very walkable to downtown, there's public transit within walking distance. We're adding all the, the five large bike racks. And, you know, again, you know, we're hoping for a work-live component here too, it's pretty ideal for that type of use. So I'm going to go on to the next slide here, I made sure to, you know, insert my six pages of calculations because because it was so painful to create. So, you know, in the end, if you look at our adjusted trips, our adjusted parking, I should say, versus what we have on site, we're looking at it's about 22, it's a 22.7% reduction versus the adjusted numbers. You have 180 on site and the adjusted number is 233. And now, as I'm talking about the adjusted numbers, I'm going to take a quick step back and talk about what these numbers are going to represent going forward. I keep referring to them as allowable parking spaces and allowable peak hour trips that we came to through working with the city, developing these calculations. So as Opel goes forward and phases in the renovations of these buildings, as I mentioned, it's not all leased up. This is going to be a phased project, they go through, based on demand, they'll be phasing these buildings in. They'll have something of an account with the city for the parking spaces and the peak hour trips. So as the new spaces are getting leased and they have to go through and get a building permit, go through the approval process with the city, they'll essentially deduct those from the account. And so what's going to be in that account is going to be a direct result of the planning board's decision tonight. And we hope to get that 20% reduction to allow that 233 adjusted spaces. So I've been mostly talking about the parking, but the peak hour trips, as a result of those, you know, there, it is shown there's a, a small impact specifically on the Roundhill Road southerly approach to Route 9, that the level of service drops. And so there is a mitigation, offsite mitigation factor included in this project. And so Opel and the city have agreed on 103,000, you know, this again comes back to these calculations that I, that were pulled together of 103,000. Specific items that are going to be implemented aren't yet determined, the number is determined. And, you know, some of the possibilities that have been discussed are some raised crosswalks, signage, possibly removing on-street parking on Roundhill Road to an extent. And, but the removal of on-street parking, which I know some of the, the neighbors have been talking about, that does have to go from the DPW to City Council and there's a process for that. That's one of the things that's been discussed. And also some, you know, lighted pedestrian actuation as well in the immediate project area. Again, the mitigation fee will be applied to projects in the project area. This isn't for stuff, you know, up on King Street and this is for the immediate project area, you know, where you'd expect the impacts to be felt. Yes, speed bumps and the raised crosswalks. And specifically for Roundhill Road, obviously Roundhill Road residents are here, there's discussion of raised crosswalks on Roundhill Road, so. And with that, I think I'll turn it over to Sean Kelly from Van Ass, just to give a brief discussion on the traffic.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Sean Kelly, I'm a traffic engineer at Van Ass and Associates, half of the project team. Thank you again for having us before you tonight. I think what I'd like to do tonight is just take a few minutes to walk you through our traffic study. How it was conducted, what our findings were, what our recommendations are. And then I'd be more than happy to have any questions that members of the board or the audience might have. To start, I think we're all familiar with the study area. Again, we're looking at the existing Clark School located off of Roundhill Road. Roundhill Road essentially bisects the campus. And again, as Darren pointed out, the eastern side of the campus would be redeveloped into residential uses with the western side accommodating more commercial uses. The study that we prepared was done in accordance with all industry, local and state guidelines. Essentially, we looked at the traffic impacts of the project along the Roundhill Road corridor, focusing on the northern and southern termini at Prospect and also at Allen, which is state numbered Route 9. First stage is we went out and did some existing data collection. We collected traffic volumes on a, on a daily basis as well as a peak hour basis. When I talk about peak hours, the, the hours that we're really concerned with are seven to nine in the morning and then four to six in the evening. And the reason this is critical is this is the time periods where you have the residential commuter traffic. The people on the east side would be coming and going to work and coming back in the evening. And then also on the west side, you would have commuter traffic where employees are arriving in the morning and then going home in the evening. So the, the time periods again were with seven to nine and four to six, which is in accordance with industry guidelines. We also took a look at some of the safety characteristics. We collected motor vehicle crash data from Mass DOT for the last three years of available data for both Roundhill at nine and Roundhill at Prospect. And what it showed is that based on the existing data, there's no safety issues out there today. Over three years, there were, there were two collisions at each location, a three-year period. No fatalities reported, the DOT establishes an average crash rate, which tells you how safe an intersection is. And we're well below the average crash rate, I believe we're one-seventh of the actual average crash rate. The next stage of our study is we take these volumes and we inflate them in a couple of ways. First, we increase the volumes. First, we increase the volumes to account for general background growth. We apply a growth factor compounded over five years, which is the state guideline. And then the, the next step is we take a look at how much traffic the project itself will generate to get a handle on that impact. We developed trip generation for the project in two ways. First, we use City of North Hampton trip generation rates as indicated in your zoning ordinance. And then we also ran the numbers usually we call ITE data, which is short for the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So we ran the generation both ways, and I'll go through what those numbers beared out. But I think it's important to note three things that we took into account when we did our generation. First off, this is a redevelopment project. The Clark School for many years was operational, and the volumes of traffic that it generated certainly are higher than the levels that you have out there today. Information we got from the school indicated that they had a full-time staff of over 100 employees, arriving at 8:00, leaving at 4:00. For many years, they had, they had bus drop-offs, 60 buses coming and going on a weekly basis. They had deliveries, they had drop-off of kids. So the volumes of traffic that historically were at the school certainly aren't there today. And in many studies of this type, what we would do is we'd compare a matrix and say, here's how it would be if Clark was operational again, here's how it would be with the project that's currently before you. We didn't do that. We're not, we're not trying to take any credit for any of the traffic that Clark generated in the past, and we've taken a very modest reduction for their consolidation efforts now. But just to be clear, we've taken no credit for any of the higher volumes that had historically traveled that corridor. The second thing that Darren touched upon is that we based our numbers on gross square footage, not leasable square footage. And it's very important because on the western side of the campus, which is really the primary generator, it was pointed out, only 60% of that space, approximately, is actually leasable space. So for instance, if I'm looking at a medical office tenant that's 3,000 square feet, for instance, I'm running the generation at 5,000 square feet, because I'm taking into account that non-leasable space, which is very conservative. So the, the generation numbers for the western side could be as high as 50% greater than what they actually will be in the field. But again, to be conservative, that's the way we approached it. And then I think the third thing that's important to take into account is, you know, this site is ideally situated. It's within walking distance of the downtown area, it's within walking distance of a number of bus stops by the PVTA and others that provide access to employment centers in the region. We didn't take credit for one trip from this project as a, as a transit trip, as a bicycling trip, or as a walking trip. Every trip that we've analyzed for this project, we've assumed is a person arriving and leaving in his car, which given the location, approximate to downtown, and then again, the transit stops, we think is very conservative and certainly will not be what you see in the field. But those were the three main things that we did to ensure that this analysis really represents what we call a worst-case scenario. And by running those numbers, what we come up with is that, using the city's rates, and I, you can go through the columns if you want, but the big number is over here, during the morning peak hour, the project would generate 130 trips. In the morning, it's predominantly inbound traffic, about 70 in and about 60 out, because you have employees coming to work. During the evening peak hour, again, 130 trips, it's basically a mirror flip, you have 55 in and 75 out, because you have more employees leaving. And that's based on the city numbers. The ITE data had a slightly higher number. During the morning peak hour, we were showing 161 trips with, again, predominantly inbound, 114 inbound, and then during the evening peak, 179 trips. So we're looking at about, you know, two and a half to three trips per minute. For all analysis purposes, we use the, the ITE data because it was more conservative than the city's own rates. And again, just to reiterate, this doesn't take any credit for transit, it assumes the larger trip generation on the vacant areas, and we're taking no credit for anything Clark had done in the past. We ran the analyses, and as Darren pointed out, in the majority of movements, the impacts are minimal. At the intersection of Prospect with Round Hill, during both the morning and the evening, there's no notable changes to delays or levels of service. That intersection is projected to work under the billed condition, essentially very similar to, as it does in the no-billed condition. At the intersection of Route 9 and Elm Street with Round Hill Road, in the morning, again, there's no reductions to levels of service, some minor increases in delay, but there's no notable impact. The only time period and the only movement where there is a reduction is traffic turning off of Round Hill Road onto Route 9 in the morning, and it's really, rather than the evening, and it's really that, that left-hand term movement. And I will say that our opinion is that the delays that we show in the report are likely overstated for the reasons I indicated before related to trip generation. And then basically, the last stage of the study is we made some recommendations to enhance traffic, and really it was predominantly what we'd call TDM measures, Transportation Demand Management. The idea being that we'd like to reduce the number of automobile trips to the extent feasible. The two main measures we recommended, installation of additional bike racks, and as Darren pointed out, there are five new bike racks proposed throughout the campus to facilitate bicycle use by employees as well as residents. We've also recommended the posting of transit schedules in conspicuous places within all the buildings, so that all employees and residents are aware of the transit options that are present within the city. And then, of course, the, the biggest mitigation measure is the, you know, the financial contribution in excess of $100,000 that would be put towards mitigation measures offsite, whether that be a bus shelter or flashing lights at existing crosswalks or raised crosswalks. I think that's something that'll be negotiated with the city, but the financial contribution is there. And that pretty much sums up what I have. More than happy to answer any questions the audience might have.
I know you said you did not include it in your calculations, so as to be as conservative as possible, but other than anecdotal, do you have actual numbers about when Clark School was more fully operational and what the traffic actually was like?
We, we provided with information based on employees, number of employees, number of buses, number of typical deliveries, and I believe the employee number was 104 full-time employees, working 8 to 4. There were, I believe it was 12 buses arriving and departing each day, so a total of 60 for the week. But as far as the dates, the timeline as to when that activity stopped, no, I'm not aware of that. That's one of the reasons we didn't feel prudent to take any credit for it.
Just a question on the, on the parking. The, there are a couple spots where it's just restriping, there's existing pavement that you're restriping, not introducing new bituminous. Can you just go over again where you, as far as parking is concerned? I know there's the, there's the drop-off area by Coolidge, but where are you introducing new paving?
Actually, and as a second part, why? Because, you know, you're adding like little bits of little two-spot spots here, two spots there, two spots. Why in the, when it seems like there's lots of parking, why those little two-spot places?
All right, so you'd like to see the restripped areas and also the, the new pavement areas?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll come back to this one. Please let me know if you want to slow down or anything here and go through. The spots, pockets where you put in two spaces here and two spaces here, we basically looked for low-hanging fruit. Were there areas we could put in some spaces without really having any impacts, just easy access, just pave in just the spaces? You don't need drive aisles, you know, high return for, for the work, I suppose. Again, just the low-hanging fruit, and it's only four spaces like that. And then again, for the restriping, behind Skinner, put three, we gave a lot of space on these, actually. You know, we could have like squeezed in for, we wanted to make sure we had plenty of access around the spaces for everyone with parallel parking. And then the area behind Gayworth here, we see this curve, it currently has a sort of like notch in the pavement, if you will, it comes out into the grass. Just looking at, just, you know, making that a smooth radius for a curb line. And right in this notch of area, there's no parking. So by just adjusting this curb line, smoothing it out, we add five spaces right in here. So again, that's just low-hanging fruit by just sort of cleaning up the curb line, if you will. These aren't parking spaces per se over here, it's more of a drop-off area next to Coolidge. And we are restriping an area next to Adams for an ADA space. You know, this sidewalk's over to Coolidge and Adams, we wanted to make sure we had enough space, enough ADA to access there.
Can I address the drop-off?
Oh, sure, yeah.
The drop-off was specifically for this area because we are negotiating for Sunnyside is losing their building on the Smith campus, and we have agreed to move them over, and we felt for safety reasons that we wanted and identified off-the-road drop-off for children.
Can I ask? With that drop-off, though, if people are coming, I think that's north towards Coolidge from Round Hill, they go into the drop-off area, do you expect them to do a U-turn at the bottom of the drop-off area to come back out? How are they going to turn around?
Well, right up here is a natural turnaround area.
Right, so they have to drive through the whole site to get out?
Yes, it's, it's not a large site, and to just come up here and circle around is not too far to go.
I think you're going to get a lot of people trying to take a U-turn there.
Oh, maybe we have to put some signs in to prevent that.
If that's an embankment on that side, if they miss it...
Yeah, that's true.
They're going to be very unhappy.
Yeah. We have a grading plan hidden in the back of the slide if you want to look at it. There's some tight contours over there, though, for sure.
And the two to the north of Adams, those won't be handicapped? Those are just two spots?
Just two spaces, yes. And there's one other area we're proposing to add spaces on the residential side of things, which again is just the back-to-back. So eight spaces back-to-back, total of 16.
Will those back-to-back have to each, they would have to be associated with the same unit?
I would think so, yes.
That's required by zoning. You can only do back-to-back within...
If they're, they're going to be numbered for the same unit, so it's not going to be park wherever you want, they're going to have to be numbered such that they're associated.
So I think a couple times you said 38 units in Hubbard and Rogers, but the original proposal had 42.
Right.
I can explain that. Mass Historic, the National Park Service came back, and there are elements within Hubbard that they want us to preserve. So the number after the requested submission came down a bit. We have to preserve the, what is known in Hubbard as the chapel, so the chapel has to stay in place. We are also required, this may sound strange to some people, but we have to reuse the length of the historic chalkboards within...
Are they built into the walls?
Correct. So when we did a recalculation, and I think we've, we've site-measured that thing maybe three times, I think it has the potential to maybe go lower and maybe one unit will get split into two, but originally we had always worked on 42, but 38 seemed to be the safe number.
I'd just add one more note, again, to the parking. I know if this was a brand-new site, this isn't the type of parking you necessarily see. This, again, comes back to the preservation of the site, how we're doing these back-to-back spaces and, you know, just the slight adjustments. You know, again, we're not looking to impact this green space at all significantly, so we really try to just, what could we do here to gain a little bit of parking that's going to be reasonable and not have a heavy impact on the site?
Our Ulta survey of the vegetation identified 1,200 pieces of vegetation, and I believe, Dan, we only found one of those to be in danger.
There was one that an arborist had had, just being unhealthy. And with our development, we're not looking to, we're not tearing into trees then.
And in fact, in concert with the National Park Service and Mass Historic, those plaques that you see on those trees have to all remain. As do benches, sidewalk plaques, all of those features that are historic must remain on the park.
If I can ask, I've got a, kind of related between parking and traffic, but I just make sure I'm understanding.
Sure.
So on traffic, or I guess on, on, as you looked at the parking, gross without the adjustments, without the historic stuff, would have been approximately 300s base?
I believe that's right, yes.
Then with the adjustment based upon actual usable square footage, 63%, that comes down?
Yes.
And then that's where you've started to work in and end up with that many spaces?
Right, but it's still a reduction beyond...
A reduction versus the gross amount. But on the traffic side, you did, it seems like you did kind of the opposite. You went the other way and said, we're not going to take credit for anything, and we're going to maximize the trips so that we're going to get the highest level, or in your sense, the most conservative measure on the traffic side. Is that...
I'm just trying to understand. One seems to be coming down, and one seem...
Right.
You seem to be taking a reduction on one side, but then an increase on the other. I'm just trying to understand that dynamic.
Explain a little. It's very, it's complicated, you know, for a site where we're not doing that much site work, there's a lot of complexity to this, to this historic preservation effort, and this is one of the central themes of those complexities. On the parking, yes, we're taking those reductions. The numbers we end up with, I believe, are still very conservative.
For the amount of square footage that is going to be developed?
Yes.
Okay.
For the trip generation, we're talking about the level of service, the analysis on the roadways, those are the ones that are all bumped up. Those are the ones, full gross square footage, you're not taking reductions for the Clark School historic operations or anything like that. Now, that's when you do your traffic analysis. When you do your trip generation calculations based on the zoning ordinance, there's a chart in there, you know, it says, you know, two spaces per residential unit unless it's under 750, then it's one, and, you know, for each use, there's a different factor. For those ones, we did take a reduction based on the leasable area. But, and that's, that ends up like, you know, kind of working its way through in a different way, but is that clear? I know it's a complicated issue, so it's a...
No, I just want to make sure of the, kind of, the relation between the two.
Sure, yeah.
Also, let me just add to that, that with the traffic mitigation, there, what's in the request is that there is a reduction of mitigation required, because the mitigation is required to be based on gross square, gross area, not leasable. So the planning board does have the authorization to, you know, modify mitigation requirements based on valid information that's presented to say, you know, well, this scenario that we're presenting is different from what a standard, you know, application might be. So they have requested on the monetary mitigation amount, a reduction based on the fact that there are leasable areas not comparable to what a standard, typical new build-out, new construction gross versus leasable would be, so...
So on the parking side, everything's scaled to that usable, quote-unquote, space number, both on mitigation and on number of space?
Right.
Okay.
Stephen?
The three buildings in the back, the boiler room, the engineering house, and the maintenance garage, you're not going to do, you're not going to be leasing those, they're going to stay for your use as a...
Yeah, the engineer's house, I think it's, it's called the cottage, and that's what it is. We really, you know, we really are going to leave it just like it is.
Just it'll be empty, or?
No, I mean, I think it's part of the, we still are going to maintain staff onsite, so we still believe it's going to continue to be the engineer's house. And it's, because we have some pretty complicated systems there, and we need to keep that full-time person onsite. Our, our management onsite is going to be very similar to the campus management that's onsite now for the Clark School. The campus still had, those had, nothing's changed on what needs to happen to...
Right, so the boiler room will still supply the heat?
It'll be the boiler room, yeah. And that other shed is, is really an oversized cinder block garage that I would love to bulldoze down because I don't think it's aesthetically pleasing, but I can't. Based on the fact that it's there, it's part of the campus, it has to stay. So I may try to bring it up a little bit, but other than that, it has to stay.
But not because of it as an individual building, but because it's part of the scheme?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, if you guys ever did, or Carolyn, if they ever did decide that they want to do something with the maintenance garage or change the use of the engineering house, do they have to come back to us at that point?
Well, if there's a change in the use of the building, so what you're approving is the mix of uses that's presented in this application. So yes, if it went to, instead of being a residence for, you know, a maintenance person, it went to an office, then yes, it would have to...
They'd have to come back to us, so we would see any change in use?
Yeah.
As I understand, for every tenant we have, we would have to refine for a zoning permit, which would then start the adds and de-dos to the parking tabulation square footage, so it would go in concert with that.
Right, so, well, right, the only, the difference would be, say you approve the 20% higher intensity office-type uses, so medical office, and a building, and it's slated for each building, there's basically a calculation for 20%, and one of the, one or two or more of the buildings don't utilize that 20%, they don't have to come back for that. And that's the thing we would look at at a building permit level, is, you know, the 20% is a maximum, sort of the worst-case scenario, but by approving the worst-case scenario, they can always do less. So under that scenario, you wouldn't have to see a change. But if it were a change that sort of is a total change in use or an increased intensity, that's what would trigger a reevaluation.
And that 20% calculation is done per building? And that twenty percent calculation is done per building or for the whole site?
The way the zoning is written is that it's on a building-by-building basis, so it doesn't allow the flexibility to say it's on a site square footage.
Right, so the Maintenance Garage, the Engineers' House, the Boiler Room have no effect, or the Gymnasium in that twenty percent. So it's twenty percent of the Coolidge, or twenty percent of Adams.
Yes.
Those two buildings, to answer your question directly, the Boiler House is mostly subterranean, there really is no commercial use for it. It couldn't be zoned for anything.
Right.
Maybe to house livestock in a storm, that's about it. The Cottage would probably be the only one that could have something else, but it's just so small. Dan, what's the square footage of the Cottage?
I really don't know.
I have.
Bill, do you know? No?
I don't think you're gonna find that.
No, I think it's.
Why is everything else in there?
I'm not sure we even, I'm not even sure we've, I gotta be honest with you. Now that you bring it in, it's a little over a thou, I've never been in it.
It's under a thousand.
It's cute, huh?
Looks like it's about twenty by thirty.
Yeah. I mean, I have a bunch, some other technical questions. Do you want to let the public speak, or any other, I mean, I got.
Does Bill have any?
Most of them.
Clarifications, just, one, you mentioned during your traffic study, you did the traffic study in the afternoon from two to six, or four to six. And I'll just mention that Northampton High School is about a mile down the road on Elm Street that lets out at two. So you might want to just think about the impact from two to six instead of four to six, just because a lot of traffic begins really at two o'clock. Smith students, afternoon classes, but also, you know, Northampton High gets out at two o'clock. So, and it's just, you know, a stone's throw down the road. So just food for thought, but. And then, the only, I just had a question, and I don't know if this is a semantic thing. In your conclusion, it says, in summary, you know, majority of instances, in addition to project-related traffic, is not anticipated to significantly impact traffic operations within the study area over no build conditions. And it's just the use of the word significantly. Is that a, is that a technical term in this particular type of presentation? Because as a resident, and I don't live in that particular area, but I have been there, and I've driven around, and I go by there all the time.
Sure.
Almost one more car at times would seem to be a significant impact. So I'm just trying to clarify, is that?
What we typically look at is, does it result in reductions to levels of service? Does it increase your delays by, I mean, if you're increasing your delay by two seconds, so instead of waiting fourteen seconds or sixteen seconds, I wouldn't consider that significant. But if you were waiting another, you know, thirty seconds, then it's something that would, the average motors would notice on a daily basis. So that's the, that's what I would say is the criteria.
Got it, okay.
Got a question on that. I mean, you are projecting that the level of substance go to F for, you know, the southbound turn on Elm Street?
Right, and that's why we said, noted that in the majority of instances. And again, the reduction of, the increase in delay and the reduction of level of service on that movement is based almost exclusively due to the fact that we're overstating the number of employees that are gonna be leaving there in the evening. I think when this space is leased, the reality is you're gonna have less employees than we projected because that dead space isn't gonna have employees in it. Hallways, stairwells, you know, there are, there's a lot of square footage that we generated for that simply won't have anyone working there. And I didn't, and we also believe that people will be taking the bus, people will be walking if they are in the downtown area.
Well, and I mean, just for clarification, I mean, for the public to hear, if, in the traffic plan, the traffic analysis, if you didn't do anything, it was, that turn was gonna go to a D, so.
Correct.
But it, but that is, it's an effect.
Right.
My name is Dan Dodger, the Opal Real Estate. I just wanted to clarify what Darren had spoken about. The granite curbing that we will be adding on both the east and the west side of Round Hill Road across our frontage, that's gonna be part of our on-site development work. We're also gonna be working, as Darren had mentioned, the no parking on both sides of Round Hill Road. We'll do whatever permitting is required as part of DPW to get that approved. And we'll do all the proper signage for no parking, no drop-offs, no deliveries, stuff like that. Because on ours, we believe we have ample room to pull in the back off the road, so across the front, we can pull up in the front. As well as the raised crosswalks, enhancing those at the proper locations across east and west, across the Round Hill Road.
I think the goal is to, number one, the street is loaded with Smith's College student parking. That's gotta all go away. Speed bumps have to go in, so we gotta slow the traffic down. And one of the major concerns with the neighborhood was that snow removal was very difficult here in the wintertime. And part of the reason is that there are not presently granite curbs, so that the plows can't, are not going up against the curb to clear.
That's one thing that the city brought to our attention. If by no longer having parking on both sides, they can now essentially get tighter to the curb. And with the asphalt curb, they'd be peeling them back, and they would be at the edge of our sidewalk. So we will be doing enhancements with granite curbing on both sides.
In the addition of sidewalks?
No.
Any other questions by the board?
I have one, Carolyn.
Yeah?
Is the no parking, I mean, is that something that is under their control? I'm just.
No, I mean.
It would have to be granted by the city.
Right, so you could, as a permit condition, say that the applicant shall petition the city council to, to remove the allowance for on-street parking, and then pay for the new signs to indicate that there's no on-street.
And we would like that.
I mean, I don't mean to.
Go right ahead.
I just think of the DPW today, David Vela, and he said that they would do it. I understand, I don't know if the DPW would prefer they do it, but just wanted to mention it.
Okay, open up to the public.
I guess.
Before we do, can I see just a quick show of hands of who's interested in speaking tonight from the public, just so I can get a feel for, okay, there's several of you. It is ten o'clock, and despite our best efforts to move things along, it's ten o'clock. So what we're gonna do is, everybody's gonna have their say. I'll call on one of you at a time. No, no second turns until everybody's had their chance. If you feel very strongly, or you're in agreement with the person who speaks ahead of you, in the essence of time, if you want to get your name on record and say, I want to restate what Mr. Smith in front of me just said, without restating the five-minute speech that Mr. Smith said, that would be appreciated. Just to keep moving things along. Adjust everything to the board, please. If you have questions of the developer, ask questions of the board. This is a give-and-take type of thing. But don't direct any questions to the applicant. And let's see how this goes. So first up, if I could see a show of hands, yes, back. If you can come up, state your name, please.
I'm Sarah Menathen. Thank you for calling up me, because I actually have some opinions from a group of people to present. And I have the suggestion of Paul Spector, made copies of our points for you. We have been very interested in the whole matter of the development of the Clark Campus, and have had lots of neighborhood meetings about it, lots of conversations on our listserv. And we, first of all, want to say how happy we are that the historic preservation is so important to Opal, and we're very grateful to Clark for taking it into consideration when they, when they decided on a developer. And the preservation of the green space and the trees, great, really, really happy about that. And kind of consonant with that, as we read through all these plans, the group of us that met recently, and that was about fifteen people, and talked to Paul Spector, and then I wrote up kind of the consensus positions that we arrived at at that meeting, and invited members of our listserv to weigh in. So ultimately, I have about twenty-five people who explicitly agreed with these points. So the first one is, we support the request for the reduction in required parking, because as we see it, it will mean the greater likelihood of preserving the beauty of the campus, which is a strong, strong neighborhood interest. And then a lot of what our other concerns had to do with is the increased anticipated traffic on Round Hill Road and ways perhaps to mitigate against that. I think there was a pretty strong majority of people that, well, I mean, certainly these twenty-five people for whom I'm speaking at the moment, agreed that it makes sense to eliminate parking on Round Hill Road, because any time there's a parked vehicle, two-way traffic past it is not possible. Vehicles have to yield to one another, and if you're trying to come down the hill and somebody's trying to come up, you know, it's currently, you know, a matter of kind of luck and maneuvering to find a place to pull over so the other person can get by. With a bunch of people trying to get in and out, I just don't see that that, that that would work anymore. That did raise a question in the minds of people who live on Round Hill Road, whether there might be any places available to residents to use on the Clark Campus during non-working hours. You know, if you had evening guests, would there be empty parking lots on the Clark Campus that we might be able to use? We're also pleased by the suggestion of the raised crosswalks and possibly even additional speed bumps if the raised crosswalks aren't, you know, close or numerous enough to really significantly slow traffic. Because if you eliminate all that on-street parking on Round Hill Road and create a through corridor from Elm Street to Prospect, it's not a place where you want people going quickly. Not only do many pedestrians walk alongside and cross and all that kind of thing, but it's also, you know, a hill with a curve, and as you get up to the top, you can't see people coming from the opposite direction. And so anything that can be done to slow things down, we would support. And hopefully, whatever raised stuff might go in the street would also be friendly to bicyclists. Some people have mentioned that if you have a bunch of bumps, then cycling becomes more difficult. So anyway, engineers can think about that, but we're interested in traffic calming measures. We also are very interested in supporting bicycle and pedestrian traffic and public transportation on and off Round Hill, because, you know, we're interested in reducing the volume of traffic. And so I don't know if the people from Opal were here when I was speaking about the pedestrian footpath that used to go behind Bell Hall that was part of Clark's, you know, Clark's sidewalks, that many people in our neighborhood currently use as a shortcut off Round Hill down to Henshaw. And if a sidewalk like that is not gonna get constructed on the Bell Hall lot, maybe Opal would be willing to consider constructing one along the border of that property line for the use of people who would be living in Rogers and, I'm blanking on the other building, but the ones on the east side of Round Hill Road. Because if you're, if you're looking to, you know, have people that might be able to get by with one fewer car, for instance, it seems to me a great idea to have a really good sidewalk down there. Then we also, a number of neighbors said that they currently enjoy walking through the Clark Campus, that they enter it not necessarily through paved paths, that it is a sort of pedestrian route that, again, kind of encourages people to get around and do errands and so forth without the use of cars. And we were hoping that those might remain open and available for public use and not get fenced and not be posted with no trespassing signs. And then finally, you know, the dangerousness of the intersections at both ends of Round Hill Road are not only represented in traffic accident figures. I think anecdotally, probably all of us who live on the hill have spun around about a hundred and eighty degrees a couple of times as we've approached those intersections in the wintertime. The hill's pretty steep, and the best efforts of the DPW doesn't seem to mean that it's, you know, it's not slippery there. There's a spring at the top of Round Hill Road. It kind of continually re-ices the road in the wintertime. So we're very concerned about that with a lot of increased traffic, and we would hope that, you know, maybe if there's, if there's more funding available through traffic mitigation fees from Opal, that maybe the safety of those roads could be better addressed in the wintertime. And as well as the visibility when you're on Round Hill trying to turn either direction onto Elm Street. There are parking spaces now that come so close to that intersection that in order to see around them and see whether there's oncoming traffic, you have to kind of pull out halfway into the road. It's really not a very, a very well-engineered intersection as it stands, even in good weather. So, but this, you know, the difficulty of getting off the hill when it has snowed is a very real one. So those are my points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wonder if I could ask, do you use your slide of the, of the Green Campus? Is that, would that be all right? While we're doing that, I want to.
Make it a name again?
Richard Greene, eighty-eight Round Hill Road. That's G-R-E-N-E. I'm, yeah, that's it. Thank you very much. I'm very pleased that Opal is determined to try and preserve the character of the campus, preserve trees and green space. I did have a suggestion. The Powerhouse Sculpture Studio? Anyway, to get to the main points, I do have to ask a question. My understanding is that the daily traffic load, the latest one, there were three different versions of the traffic study, was one thousand six hundred and fifty-nine cars a day, adding four-seventy-one to whatever the additional figure was, four-seventy-one being the existing figure. Is that correct? Because there's a figure going around of twelve ninety-nine, which I think is additional, an earlier version of the additional.
The daily number, we, basically, I T E data is thirteen eighteen.
Pardon me?
One-three-one-eight.
Okay, that's the total, or is that the additional?
That's the additional.
That's the additional, so you add four-seventy-one to that. Okay. This has been kind of a moving target. There have been three revisions of the, of the traffic plan, and we've tried to follow it, but we're just ordinary citizens. We're not traffic experts. I haven't run the figures on that particular one. I thought I ran the last one, but if you divide forty-seven, four-seventy-one into that, you get figures from the versions of the traffic plan that I've looked at, traffic study, of an increase of three-hundred and fifty-two to three-hundred and seventy-five percent. And I'll wager that the figures are low, because I've been in a situation in Princeton, New Jersey. There was a big development near the, near the physics lab that involved a contest between the community and the university. Each side had a traffic consultant. The figures were strikingly different. The ones produced by the university were very favorable to their, the level of development they were proposing. The ones produced by the other traffic expert were much lower, more favorable, pardon, higher, more favorable to the community. We've seen these figures go down and down with each revision. Some, one of them did go up in one revision, particularly the peak-hour traffic, which I guess impacts on the mitigation fee, has gone down and down. I'd like to ask you, I'll imagine, you mentioned something about riding the street. You live on the street now, so let's say there's sixty cars an hour. We're talking about a over three-hundred and fifty percent increase. That could go up to two-hundred and twenty-six. In other words, one car a minute, four cars a minute. It could easily go up to two-hundred and fifty or even higher, I would strongly imagine. There are two, that's the general traffic load, that's one problem. There are two other problems. One, the Round Hill Road Elm Street intersection. It's called the Round Street, Round Hill Road Elm Street intersection. It's really Round Hill Road Elm Street Campus Lane. Campus Lane, we don't have a picture. It's the main entrance and exit from the college. Cars turn left out. turn left out of there. Cars turn left from Elm into there. It's not heavy traffic, but it's a pretty continued stream. You also have two student crosswalks there that are heavily used at certain times of the day. This is a very complex intersection. If you add, at present, it works fairly well, except for left turns from Round Hill onto Elm. I think everything is going to work considerably less well if you increase the traffic on an order of 350, 400 percent. That needs to be looked at, I think. A second, well, on the other end, on Prospect End, the ice has been mentioned. There's a very steep hill. Visibility has been mentioned. That's not a great intersection either. You add traffic to that, there are going to be problems. And I'll second what Sarah Metcalf said. I go down that hill that went at five miles an hour. I've stopped using it because one day there was ice. These springs, there are a couple of them, cause ice to form very quickly. Five miles an hour, I slid out into the intersection. I couldn't stop myself. Paul Spector, our councilman, had the same experience. A lot of us have had that experience. So these are tough intersections. Another problem is you're going to have the addition of parents taking students to the, children to Sunnyside, the daycare center. A lot of them are going to come from the west. There's a big residential area between Round Hill Road and Child's Park and off to the south of Elm. Those people are going to be coming east to take their children to school. Some of them will walk. Some of them will be driving their kids on the way to work. Some will never walk. Some won't walk because it's raining or it's snowing. There's going to be a considerable influx of traffic in there. I'm not questioning the figures. I haven't even looked at them actually for that. But here's the problem. They're coming from the west. They're going down Elm Street. They're going to have a tremendous problem turning left at Elm during peak hours. It's already difficult. They're not going to want to go to Prospect because of the problems at the base of this very steep San Francisco, steep hill that we've got on the north side of Round Hill. They're particularly not going to want to go back down that way where it's very dangerous when there's ice there. And there's a visibility problem, particularly when you're turning left. You can't see the traffic coming up Prospect toward you on your right until you're out into the intersection. And you, I've never been unlucky with that, but if you increase traffic enough, there'll be some accidents there, as I think there will be at the Elm Street intersection unless they put in, even if they put in a three, four, five-phase light, because you're going to have a lot of people getting frustrated, trying to turn left, trying to get out into the stream of traffic, students crossing, cars having to stop for the students. There'll be fender benders, road rage. People will be injured, I think, pedestrians. The third possibility for the daycare center is that you can go up Bancroft, which is the curving road, I think, in the upper right-hand corner of the map. People already do that. My wife and myself and other people use Bancroft to avoid the congestion, current congestion at Elm and Round Hill Road. We use it going, when we're going to Florence, when we're going to the hospital, when we're going to doctors' offices, a lot of doctors' offices in Florence and near the hospital. People are going to use that more and more if the traffic on Round Hill Road increases by 350, 400 percent. 400 percent is my figure. 350 is kind of in the middle. Well, it's below the middle. It's lower than the lowest figure from the traffic studies. There's a problem at the top of Round Hill, pardon me, of Bancroft. There's a traffic choke point there. There are cars, there's parking on both sides. The street is about the width, I would say. I didn't measure it, of Round Hill, about 20 feet. It's a street, you can tell by looking at it that it'd be hard for two cars to pass and going in different directions where there are cars parked. And there are always cars parked in the last couple hundred yards or so. There's, so when you put all these three problems together, one thing that seems to me to be extremely desirable, certainly desirable from the point of view of residence. I don't want to see my traffic increase by 350 percent or more in front of my house. We bought our house, our condo, at 88 Round Hill three, three and a half years ago. It was a very quiet neighborhood then. I don't know when the heavy traffic was at Clark, but it certainly wasn't in our time. It's going to change radically with this development. So the question is, what, if anything, can be done to reduce the traffic? I have three suggestions. One is what I call a back road. People call it different things, which would be a link. There's currently a road from the Powerhouse. If you look in the, at that building that points upward in the upper-left part of the campus, that's the Powerhouse. I can't see it too well from here, but there's a road that goes down there to Lower Bancroft. It comes in just above Crescent. That road does not link to the center of the campus. It could be, there could be a link from the parking area to that road between the engineer's cottage and the garage, which incidentally I'd also like to see torn down if that can be done. Really doesn't add anything and it would be, create a place for additional parking spaces, which I think will be needed without diminishing the beauty of the front of the campus. By the way, I'm sorry to take so long, but it's a very complicated problem, as I think you can appreciate.
It is complicated.
We can't do anything about that garage.
Well, that's just a passing, I haven't even focused on.
If we could focus, you're at about the 15-minute mark and for the sake of others, I'd just like to, I want to hear what you have to say, but if we could...
I'll try and speed it up.
Thank you.
Okay. One objection to that is that the slope is too steep. It isn't in that point that I've mentioned. It's steep everywhere else. There, I would say it's probably about a five-degree grade. I'm not an expert on this. I don't know. There's approximately a 45, 50-yard stretch between the parking area and the existing road. That would take traffic off Round Hill Road. It would relieve the problems at both ends of Round Hill Road, which are going to be major. And it would also, incidentally, relieve upper Bancroft, your Round Hill Road, of the traffic that's going to go there when people are having problems getting in at the ends of Round Hill Road, when a considerably greater number of people are using that. The big objection to that obviously comes from people who live on Crescent and Franklin, which would be the streets they would use to get back to Elm, and of course, the people who live on Lower Bancroft. There's been talk about what people are calling containment, meaning keep the traffic on Round Hill Road. I think this is a matter of fairness. Does Round Hill Road get all the traffic or is it shared? At present, the buildup will cause, will bring traffic, I think, of 1,659 cars daily to Round Hill Road. The traffic on Franklin, I don't know what it is on Crescent, this was 2007, you gave us the figures, Carolyn, was 1,141. So there's a lot of room there for distributing this rather than putting it all on Round Hill Road. That's of interest to us as people who live there. I think it's also of interest to the city in terms of preventing serious problems at Elm and Prospect and Elm and Round Hill. A final thing, well, there's a similar possibility on the other side going down to Henshaw. I don't want to get into that. It'll just take too much time. You can figure that one out and embrace it or reject it. The, another possibility to the back road, if that's not approved, would be to eliminate parking on Upper Bancroft. That wouldn't do anything much for Round Hill Road. It wouldn't really have the pressure of the intersections. Next point, and I've got three more, two of which are quite short. The next point is how the 20 percent buildup of high-traffic offices is measured. We asked OPD about it. We're told at first that it's based on the usable space and that was corrected. And we were told it was based on the total space, gross square footage, rather than the usable space. So there's kind of a double incentive here. I assume when this ordinance was passed a few months ago, allowing the 20 percent high-traffic development, that the reason for it was to give developers an incentive to buy church and historically educational properties. What's happened here, I suspect, without anybody having realized that the law of unforeseen consequences, is that in Opel's case, they're getting a 30 percent incentive. That's the percentage that 20 percent of the gross would represent of the usable space. They can use, they can use 30 percent of the usable space for high-traffic offices, more traffic on the road, more problems at the end. Unless the, there's something that makes it crystal clear in the history of the ordinance.
Mr. Green, I don't want to interrupt, but you're at 20 minutes now. It's 10:30. So I really need you to try to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm going to wrap it up. That's all I need to say on that subject. The other thing is, if there's no parking on Round Hill Road, we need speed bumps. We need...
Right. That was proposed.
Right. Yeah, pardon me for repeating. I'm also concerned that there isn't going to be enough parking and that a few years, two years from now or whenever, you'll be asked to issue a new permit for more parking on campuses, especially if parking is eliminated at Round Hill Road, which I'm not opposing. Finally, I just want to mention very quickly that the community has been handicapped here. We found out about the application a few days after it was filed. We weren't informed. We heard the rumor and we asked, has it been filed? We then spent the weekend trying to access the documents. It's tremendously difficult. I don't know if you ever tried to access documents on the OPD site. If you don't know where you're going, you're lost. And then there's this flow of amendments. The last revision of the traffic study was, I think, the fifth. That's six days ago. There was a revision of the whole application and the associated papers. Some papers disappeared. New ones appeared. On the third, this doesn't seem to me to be the way to do it. I'm told that there should be 30 days between the application and the hearing so as to give the developer a fair shake so that they're not delayed. I think it should be 30 days from the last amendment where the amendment is as significant as these have been. Thank you. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Grandonico from Bancroft Road. I will be brief. I am one of those people where the, if there's an entrance and exit onto Lower Bancroft, that'll directly affect us. So I'm hoping that that doesn't go through. But the one thing that hadn't been addressed is the drainage and runoff on the westerly side of the campus, which currently is quite a problem for both me and the neighbors that are all downhill from me, as the water comes streaming off of the campus across the road, over my yard, down into their yards. So I know that there's going to be granite curbing on the Round Hill Road, but I didn't know if curbing could be addressed where there's holes on Bancroft as well as there's storm drains now. And they have boulders around. I didn't know if perhaps more of those could be put around the storm drains so that they could at least displace the water so that it wasn't shooting out like a jet from, there's basically two areas onto Round Hill or onto Bancroft. Also, I appreciate that you're keeping the trees and I know that one had been trimmed this summer, but right on the corner of Bancroft there, there are quite a few tree limbs that look like they could go in any storm if we were to have any specifically in October. So I didn't know if it could be noted that upkeep of the tree limbs would be appreciated on that side. And that's all. Keep it brief.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll try to set a speed record. I'm Tom Durr, 32B Round Hill Road. I'm speaking...
I'm sorry. Your name again?
Tom Durr, D-E-R-R. I'm speaking also at the request of my neighbor Deborah Eaton at 32A, who's unable to be here tonight, and she asked me to represent her interests, which are, like mine, strongly favorable to Opel's development plan, including the parking reduction. And the only thing that really, she's worried about, of course, is the usual one, the traffic flow. In believing that Round Hill Road is too narrow a road to bear very much increase in traffic, certainly if the parking is allowed on it. It's already restricted on much of the road anyway. It should be restricted, disallowed and all of it. The other point that she wanted to introduce, and I'll introduce it only for her, and I'm open on the subject, is that given the increase in traffic on the top of the hill, she believes that one ought to look seriously at two means of egress, east and west, one to Lower Bancroft and one to Henshaw. And she hopes that that might be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
First, I don't agree with all the neighbors with eliminating parking on Round Hill because I don't know where any of our friends, guests, or anybody would park because I'm not sure that that's going to resolve the problem. Cars still need to park and people don't have long enough driveways on Round Hill Road to accommodate parking, let alone our own personal deliveries or anything else that we have to deal with. So, you know, I don't think that's a solution. I think that's just a, hey, you know, it makes the road a little wider. But 20 feet isn't exactly great for a lot of cars and increased traffic. I couldn't agree more with creating egresses on Bancroft and on Henshaw. I know it's not popular to say if you don't, if you live on those streets, but I agree with the agreement. Why should Round Hill Road take the full brunt of all the traffic? It just doesn't seem fair and it's not practical. And that intersection on Elm Street, even if you have three cars increased, if you're taking a left-hand turn, it could take 20 minutes. I can't imagine what it's going to be like when there's 30 cars at rush hour. And it just, it really doesn't make any sense that that's not going to be an issue. I think you're going to need to put a traffic light there. And I think the fact that you have pedestrians, so even in the three-second shot you get to take a left-hand turn, without a doubt, there's always a pedestrian in the crosswalk. So you can't take a left-hand turn. And I'm going to guess, because I think, you know, a lot of the forecasts are just guesses, that 90 percent of the people are going to be taking a left-hand turn because they're probably coming from a commute, especially if, I still can't even figure out the percents of what percent's going to become commercial. But nobody has really addressed the commercial piece. All the traffic indications are at peak morning and evening. Well, if you have a very successful medical office, are people not going to come and go continuously? I don't know, you know, people go to regular doctors and dental offices, but if you have a busy doctor or dental office, you could have 25 to 30 people in one hour visiting that office. And I don't see where that's spoken to at all in any of these reports or studies. So I think that's something that needs to be considered. And, you know, I just feel that overall, I'm not sure where the commercial side came in, but originally it was all supposed to be residential. Now that it's going to be commercial, I feel like North Hampton has so many other areas where there could really be, and it already is zoned, commercial. And now all of a sudden Round Hill is going to become a major commercial hub before it was a school. And I'd point out that when the numbers for Clark School were indicated, I'm going to guess, just like I think all these projections are guesses, that there were not as many residents on Round Hill Road at that time. There's been several condos that have been added. There's been other houses that have been built. So we can't ignore the fact that there's a lot more residents on Round Hill now than there were 20, 30, or 40 years ago. And I'm here just to preserve, it's a fact that my quality of life is going to go down. And it's unfortunate, but it's just a fact that I have to accept it. So I'm trying to figure out the best way to mitigate the reduction of our quality of life on Round Hill Road. It's a great quaint neighborhood. It's got a lot of people that are there because of the quality of life and it's definitely going to be diminished. So I would just urge this board to figure out ways to reduce that diminished lifestyle because it's going to happen. And I think that we're kidding ourselves if we underestimate the traffic impact on Round Hill Road. And I can't believe, nobody has said how appalling the potholes on Round Hill Road are. So I can't believe that it's not even a stipulation that Round Hill Road has to be paved somehow to accommodate these additional 1,000 cars. Because, you know, just living there, I can't believe I cheer when I see the pothole filled only to be destroyed again next winter. And again, that left-hand turn on Prospect Street, I think it's been underestimated just how ridiculously dangerous that traffic street is. So, you know, anyone that's ever lived there, if you had mentioned that you've been on Round Hill and you know it's a real bear taking that left-hand turn on Elm Street, well, just magnify that times however many it's going to be. And, you know, I don't know if this is a done... And, you know, I don't know if this is a done deal as far as the commercial side and the entire west side being commercial buildings, but it just seems like that's gonna increase traffic even more than projections, regardless of the net space, or the gross space, or any of the other figures. And my other concern is, what happens if they're wrong about everything, and that they can't actually do anything, they, there's not the demand for the commercial space, or the demand for the residential space?
Then what?
We will have made all these changes to Round Hill Road that are for the worse, but we're the ones that are still stuck living there with buildings that have been built out that now have, the city has to figure out how to create revenue, and so does Opal. And, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but it just seems like we're about to make some big changes with traffic and everything else, and if we're wrong, then we're stuck in the neighborhood with devalued houses and reduced quality of living. So, you know, again, I think the biggest way to accommodate the traffic is making sure that there's some kind of flow on Bancroft and on Henshaw, because there's the space. And I also think that having a direct route to King Street makes sense, and the quickest route is up King Street. But, again, I know that's not popular, but I just don't think Round Hill should take the full brunt of all of this increased traffic. I just don't think it's feasible, even if we agreed to it. I just, it's very hard to imagine that there's very little, or quote, "no significant impact." Five cars taking a left-hand turn onto Elm Street is a significant increase in the amount of time that it's gonna take to take that left-hand turn. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I wish I knew beforehand that you were gonna say this, because it's large, but I'm going to add to.
Ma'am, can I get your name?
Pardon me?
Your name, please.
Teddy Rose, Round Hill Road. And I do want to applaud wherever they were, all the Opal people, because I do think they've done a lot to meet some of the needs of all of us, including the city at large, which is to concentrate on maintaining the historic nature, and not to take down trees, and to respect green spaces, and so forth. So we're all very grateful for that. I do want to reiterate something else about the traffic problem, and that is that in many of the Opal documents, they seem to refer to this as being a downtown location. And I think all of us in North Hampton realize that that is not downtown. I'm also very puzzled about the 20% issue, and suspect that that must have come up initially, maybe when Holly Junior High was being developed, which is in the center of downtown. In any case, it isn't, it isn't the kind of thing that will either contribute, I think, to the feasibility of what is being talked about, and it certainly doesn't do anything for the traffic problems, which are legion in that area. I don't really wanna go through that, because I think my predecessor said it all. I think it is an issue for all of us on Round Hill right now. I might add, and I don't know whether that was taken into the traffic study, there is already a major condominium size, which is actually across from me. There are three more condominiums that have been added. So when we're talking about Clark School had a lot of traffic when they had a lot more students there, that doesn't do away with the fact that we have a lot more actual residents with cars, and people who need to get out to do what we all need to do. In addition to that, I would like to point out that the whole area is indeed residential, except for the educational institutions around. Many of us who are now in the area are people who've lived in North Hampton for a long time, or else have come in because we've liked that particular area. So we came in after the Clark School buses and so forth. We bought into something because we wanted it, we cared for it, and we continue to care for it, even with the many problems that have been talked about, the ice, the potholes, the traffic, et cetera. I don't have to repeat that. Our world is going to be changed, there's no question about it, but it's going to be changed in a major, major way, and I think it's going to affect our quality of life, it's going to affect our property values, and if that's indeed the case, that's going to reverberate back to the city and the city budgets, because we're getting a lot of taxes from a lot of houses on Round Hill Road at the moment. So, what I'd like to do is also say, please, please, realize that this is not just the renovation of a church, or the remodeling of a garage, or the redevelopment of a school for residential. This is an 11-acre parcel. It's a huge project. It's going to change and alter the character of the city. We are all dependent on your care, which I know you will give to this project, when you think about it, when you vote on it, and please do consider those of us who are also sharing in this, who are sitting on Round Hill Road and in the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm George Snook, live in Bancroft Road. I'm probably the longest resident there. I moved there in '58, have been there ever since. In the interest of brevity, let me say I agree completely with the two previous speakers, and in particular, what happens if the Opal thing doesn't go through? Thank you.
Hold on, hold on. Yep, sir.
Just a footnote.
Can you come?
Charles Robertson, 33 Langworthy Road. Just a footnote, what's been said about traffic. I was delighted with the idea that there would be bicycle racks up there. How many people from Opal have bicycled up Round Hill Road? I speak to someone who bicycled for 75 years. There won't be a lot of bicycle traffic up there.
That's a point I also wanted to make, that I forgot, that you could put five bike racks, you could paint...
Sir, 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 it's not, thank you. Anybody who hasn't spoken yet?
It's a very quick comment. It's not as if suddenly all the traffic is gonna go on to Lower Bancroft. There is already traffic on Bancroft, and with the congestion that's gonna occur on Round Hill Road and at those intersections, more and more people are gonna use Bancroft. I'll grant you, it won't be as much as it will be if a back exit is created, but it's, but the problem exists now, or will exist.
Sir, in the back.
Rafael Adler, Simon Hillside Road, and thanks for hearing me. It seems clear that the traffic situation is such, well, let me put it this way, if the project goes through, the neighborhood will be radically transformed. And, the traffic situation, my sense is that if more access roads are built, they'll be used. I guess, sorry, I guess I would suggest that, well, that we think about other paradigms. What I find sort of disturbing about the situation is, we're trying to apply paradigms from systems that don't really work to a current situation. Think ahead 25 years, think about what the infrastructure will look like, think about how many cars will be on the road. I understand that we have to think about six months from now, and 12 months from now, but we're also talking about projects that will last for generations after we go. And it seems to me that we, it might be more productive to think long-term as well, and to factor that into some kind of solution. I wish I could speak more specifically, I don't have any expertise in this area, but, but it seems to me that the current situation calls for perhaps more creative thinking than to apply older paradigms. Again, I wish I could be more productive.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken? No? Yes, miss?
Just a footnote to what I was saying about the traffic and the commercial, as I said, I didn't want to repeat what had been said before. One thing that no one seemed to comment about was the fact that if there is indeed a daycare center up there, the daycare center actually has people coming and going four times a day, and I can attest to that, because I lived next to one for, actually, it was the same one, for probably 30 years. So I can tell you that there is intense traffic four times a day, not just two times a day. So that's another thing to consider in all of this.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Comments? It's almost 10 of 11. Do you wanna, do we have enough to, so you wanna keep it open while we...
We'll add some more questions, so, you know. Sir, do you have anything you want? Some of the stuff is, is based on what the comments were. One of them, one of the comments is about fencing. As far as I can see, you're not planning on fencing off, putting up borders, no trespassing signs, there's, there's...
None whatsoever. The walkability is highly desirable, so that will stay. Playground will be modified, because the existing playground doesn't meet child safety regulations, but we want it to be an open campus that's used by all the neighbors, so...
Then could the tennis courts, excuse me? Will the tennis courts be, stay?
Yeah, they'll be there.
And they'll be open to the public?
Yeah. We, we're not gonna police them. You know, well, one of the, in that fact, is that one of the problems, and a lot of great comments, and a lot of things we've taken into consideration, some things we just can't, can't accommodate, can't answer, but I think the comments were all very articulate. Bancroft Road exit down there, that slope is not 5%, it's 45%. We did look at that potential.
Not so.
And we had it graded and measured where we would have to, if we applied standards for creating the road. The road that's there is not, would not meet any, any present guidelines or standards. So where we would have to exit, and where we would have to come down, would, would create that 45-degree slope, so it makes little sense. The other problem is that water will always be a problem. Prior to even the Clark School, prior to its predecessor, this was a resort because of hot springs that still exist on the site. It is inundated with water, and it, it, mineral springs, excuse me, I wish there were hot springs. So you have a lot of water penetration, you've got some, some natural geyser types of locations that come up. The other thing with the Bancroft drop, that's where the existing drainage line exists. So tearing through there is quite a project. But I do agree that, you know, the trees, if there are trees that are impeding on Bancroft Road, they need to be taken care of, as part of the traffic mitigation, additional blocks on that side, I mean, we're open to all of those.
The fact that you've looked at Bancroft says that you would actually, I mean, it would, it would improve your site if you could work that out, but the point is that you've looked at it, and it wasn't working.
It's a bear. And I think that if you wanna talk an iced-up road, I think that that thing would be a sheet of ice in the winter.
Just to talk about the great difference from the side of the engine, from the side of the Boiler House, there's gotta be a 10-foot drop before you can get in the back door. You gotta go down a set of stairs to a landing, go down a set of stairs to a landing. You open up a set of doors in the Boiler House, and you go down a set of stairs. So you're already down six feet to get to a somewhat level area. That's the 45-degree area that he's talking about. So you gotta take it from there to a point, so you're talking about building everything back up, which now creates outflows in adverse areas as well.
I was just making the point that I was pleased that you had considered it, and then given it to the office.
Yeah, we thought, listen, if we could have had a secondary means of egress and entrance, we obviously looked at that, and a couple other possibilities, it just, it was not, it was not the egress. And, you know, I, I think there are great comments about the turn, I mean, I've made that turn lots of times, on a weekly basis, and the left-hand turn is difficult, but with all due respect, I think that's an issue for, I think it will always be difficult as it is now or in the future. I think it should be a right-hand turn only. I mean, I think that it's a traffic pattern issue that can be resolved, you know, that has nothing to do with ours and the development. I mean, you know, you've got a walk, a crosswalk right there, as you take a left-hand turn, and in any, I don't care if there were five houses on the street, anybody going down that street taking a left-hand turn is gonna have a tough time. Especially when it's slippery in the road.
Crosswalk blocking the traffic's about the only way we get out.
While you're there, because the other question I had is along lines of tennis courts, the gymnasium, I think you guys have said, you know, you're not turning into a club.
No.
Historically, the rec department has used it for the basketball courts, the pool has been open to the public. Are there any plans, or have you guys worked out an agreement with the rec department to continue to use that gym and the pool?
I mean, we're completely open. We have, our only idea at this point was just to add some Nautilus equipment, and put a passcode, a key fob on it, so that residents had access to it, if anybody from the neighborhood wanted to participate in it, you know, have a service fee of $10 a month or something, just to make sure that we keep up with maintenance. But the building is in exceptional condition, and there is not a single plan, and there won't be, to touch it in any way.
Well, I guess what I, what I, I'm not sure if we wanna make it a condition, or to allow the rec department to continue to use the...
Is it still using?
As I, as I understood it, from talking with Lou, the building inspector, and with planning and zoning, if that building does become public, then you have to add it into the mix, you have to add the parking, you have to add the traffic counts, you have to add that, because now it's a, rather than accessory to the users that are already there, you're making it a public entity, now you gotta account for parking, traffic, and et cetera. That's why we kept that as accessory, we kept...
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're introducing...
If the park rec wants to use it, you know, we have to meet the guidelines.
Well, I mean, it's a good point, when my kids, yeah, when my kids were in the rec department, played basketball there, I actually parked in the lot behind Round Hill, because there's nobody any there, there's never anybody there.
Yeah, it's in, it's, it's in pristine shape.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great point. So that's the, so if they did, if we did make it a condition that the rec department had to use it, it would change the use.
Oh, yeah, I don't think you could do that, because you wanna evaluate what that would be, I mean, that would add another element of functionality to the site, which you, you know, you could consider, but you'd wanna probably see what that amounted to, and I don't know if the rec department wants it, or...
I don't know, yeah, I don't know if they still use it, this was a couple of years ago, when they were using it for, for basketball.
As far as we're concerned, it's an amenity to the, to the residents of the neighborhood.
Right. And again, if, this repeats the question I said before, if that, if the, if the use of that building changes, it would have to come before us anyway. So, can I ask another?
Sure. Your honor, roll.
Your honor, roll. One of the things I don't see on the site, and, you know, we didn't talk about snow or dumpsters, but where are you gonna be doing, I imagine now there's a central trash collection mechanism, it takes care of all the buildings, where on the site are dumpsters or trash collection? How's that...
A lot of that is over in the back work area by the Boiler House.
So what if Cool, what if, if there's a medical office in Coolidge, or if there's a lawyer's office...
Yeah, I know we're using the term medical, we're not big fans of medical offices, that's not, that's not our highest and best use.
What, what's gonna happen, where are those, what are the facilities gonna be for disposal of trash from, I mean, I'm not...
That'll be commercially removed off the premises.
It's gotta be stored somewhere until the trucks arrive, doesn't it?
Yeah, I think those dumpsters would be in that area.
So there's just nothing on the plan, it's like for Gouth, I'm not sure if I pronounced it correctly, is a pretty big building, I would imagine you're gonna have a dumpster for that.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, it should be there, yeah.
I don't think there's a dumpster show outside, but...
That's, I mean, usually...
There's a dumpster area behind that building right now.
There's existing dumpsters in, in most of the locations.
Right, so typically what's gonna happen is, we're gonna say the dumpsters have to be screened.
Yep.
If it's behind the building, then you're not gonna be able to see it.
Well, it depends which building we're talking about, I mean, Adams, you can see...
Even if it's not on the plan, we would, as a commercial, we would screen those anyways.
Right.
We don't, we don't want those.
And then what are you gonna do about snow removal? How are you gonna handle the...
Well, it'd be taken off-site, but there's a regular open space, you know, are we talking about last year's snow or the year before?
Yeah, what?
I don't think we could ever accommodate for the year before, but...
Yeah, because I imagine, I mean, there is a lot of space, but I imagine it's...
There's a lot of open space on, on the campus for the snow removal. Don't hold me to it if we have a year like the year before.
Well, that's, I mean, I guess it is a commercial place, you know, it's incumbent upon you guys because people have to park.
Absolutely. It's in our best interest.
It's going to be incumbent on you to get rid of the snow, so.
I think one of the changes of, of, of the use clearly brings along with it a much higher standard of, of maintenance and upkeep to bring it to a commercial level.
Right.
And that includes snow removal on the street. I mean, we're not mandated to remove snow on the street, but it's in our best interest to run our own plows up and down when we have to.
And you guys aren't putting it, there's no light poles, there's no new light fixtures?
One thing, we're still in the public comment, I should enter into record, there's a correspondence that we've been asked to read from Deborah Eden, and I think Tom.
You spoke to it before, but, Eden sent this in earlier, so I'll just, it's a little bit lengthy, but I'll try to plow through it. "To the City of Northampton Planning Board, I am writing in regard to proposed development of the Clark School campus by the Opal Development Group because I am unable to attend tonight's meeting. As a close neighbor of the proposed project, I will be directly impacted by the decisions made by the planning board in regard to this project. I am in favor of many aspects of the proposed plan, and I believe that developing the Clark Campus for new uses is in the best interest of the city and the neighborhood. I am glad that the look of the Clark buildings and campus and most of the trees will be preserved. I also support the efforts of the zoning and planning boards to find ways to encourage alternative means of transportation, such as walking and biking in the city's neighborhoods. On the other hand, I am very concerned about the amount of traffic which will be generated by this development. It seems to me that the only time to significantly affect the impact of this development is now, before plans are finalized. In terms of the Opal Plan, I would encourage the board to include conditions which will further efforts to reduce or mitigate vehicular traffic. Some of those conditions have been suggested by the city's traffic engineer, such as a covered bus waiting area westbound on Elm Street and the use of speed bumps on Round Hill Road. More to be done by requiring that pedestrian walkways throughout, through the campus be available to the public and by ensuring that bike paths and bike racks are incorporated into the site plan. There may be other creative ideas which could impact this aspect of the development, and I would encourage the board to support as many of those ideas as possible. My major concern about the proposed development is the increase in traffic on Round Hill Road. Therefore, I would ask the board to carefully review the information provided by the Opal Group to determine if traffic impacts have been accurately projected. Keeping in mind that once a project is approved, the ability to decrease the impact will have been lost, I would also ask the board to carefully consider the question of what amount of traffic increase can be accommodated without dramatically changing the character of this lovely residential neighborhood, which contributes to the character of the city. Rather than simply apply percentages to the types of uses, i.e. twenty percent high-traffic commercial development, I would suggest that the types of uses allowed should be driven by a maximum traffic allowance. In other words, the board could stipulate that the traffic increase could not exceed a specified acceptable amount, and the developer could then plan the percentage of various uses accordingly. Finally, last paragraph, finally, I have seen several traffic studies provided by the developer, and I think an increase of nearly eight hundred vehicle trips per day or more is an unreasonable burden to put on one street in a fairly quiet residential area. If the consensus is to create denser neighborhoods and the result is that there are more cars and traffic, I would respectfully request that the traffic be distributed to other parts of the neighborhood by creating additional egresses from the parking areas on the Clark Campus. Although there are some questionable engineering challenges, I believe egresses on both Bancroft and Henshaw are quite feasible. A single egress on each side of Round Hill Road means that the entire impact of the traffic increase is borne by one street. I'd like to see the board at least request and consider a plan with those additional egresses before granting approval. Sincerely, Deborah E. Eden."
Can I just address a couple of things?
Yep.
The, the subject of report, traffic report revisions, it's come up several times. Our initial traffic report was based on the leasable, projected leasable areas, but per the zoning ordinance, it is required that it's submitted based on gross areas. And again, that really inflates the numbers a lot, and also this, the whole twenty percent, again, we were, those numbers are broken out to allow, you know, flexibility going forward, this phased leasing and phased renovations here, but again, they're inflated numbers. So, the traffic report, all the people throwing around the numbers, I'm not saying it's not an increase, but they are inflated, and it's, it's by virtue of the zoning ordinance and having to go by the gross numbers. Again, we have a hundred and eighty total spaces on-site. So, as people are thinking about the amount of traffic on-site, I'd ask them, you know, instead of looking at, you know, thousands, which is a conservative number, think about a hundred and eighty parking spaces, and they're about half office and about half residential. Just, you know, in your day-to-day life, how many trips do you expect? And just to, just trying to put, put it more realistic, because really, it's, it's an atypical type of project, like I keep repeating, through this historic renovation project. And so, these numbers get inflated because of the zoning ordinance, and just to kind of bring it back to reality, just a hundred and eighty parking spaces. And, you know, very valid concerns people bringing up, I think they're important to note, and again, the applicant, Opals agreed on mitigation package or mitigation fee to be implemented in the areas of concern in the neighborhood, and certainly, I think there's been a lot of focus, very valuable focus from the, from the neighbors on certain areas, and, you know, that can be a consideration as, you know, we work with the city, we would reply to the mitigation fees. So, you know, we're willing to work with the city, and, you know, again, that input is very valuable, so just wanted to address some of the points. Thank you.
Just want to follow up on the traffic. There were some comments about, well, there are some other peak times for different uses, but the important thing is looking at where generally throughout the city, peak traffics are a problem and what we have to mitigate for. And those hours are taken into consideration, all the uses that are typical at that hour, so it's mostly workforce uses, but even, you know, school dismissal is included in overall, the overall evaluation of where the peaks are, and school dismissals don't increase, create a peak at a different time, so it's sort of wrapped into the, the general analysis for traffic studies. And then, and so, in Northampton, the peak, afternoon peaks have really, overall in the system, are the ones that are most important to mitigate for. So, that's why we ask, and that's what the standard is, is looking at the afternoon peak trips from four to six P.M.
Did you mention that the grade on Bancroft is forty, or that road that could potentially be in the background is forty-five degrees? Just out of curiosity, what's the grade on Round Hill going into Prospect Street?
Excuse me, I just want to comment, my name is Dan, I gave Demetrius that information up. I was referring to from where, I believe this gentleman was talking about, the side of the Boiler House. I wasn't giving, I wasn't talking about the side of the Boiler House.
I get what you're saying, so.
The side of the Boiler House and the engineers upstairs.
What's the general grade on Round Hill? Because my understanding is, you know, anything's possible, it's just a money issue, so.
I would, I would guess twenty-eight to thirty-five.
Twenty-eight, thirty.
Towards the bottom.
But you have to have, and that's not a bad thing, maybe forty-five is doable, it's how much distance you have to go. And there's a big difference of looking up the hill than looking down the hill. So, when we have to generate a road going downhill, we start, you can't start at the, at the high end of a peak, and the only place that you could enter a road there, because you can't take down the other buildings, is next to the Boiler House. You can't start a road anywhere else.
Well, you can change the grade. I just want to point out, it is, I believe, it's just a money issue, and I understand their position, and I'd be doing the same thing, but I believe the Henshaw situation and Bancroft, it's just money, and it does impact our quality of life and the traffic situation, so I, I do think it really should require further study. Because it's a big, it could really make things a lot more pleasant for us up there, and I think it's worth, it's worth a little more information.
I just want to speak, I mean, I hear what you're saying, I definitely can understand your point. There is a limit to what you can do with the grades. A common, I don't know what the Northampton requirement specifically is, around ten percent for maximum grade on a driveway, and that, that is just like an narrow driveway, it's not a road right now.
Well, I haven't seen the town say that it's not possible.
Okay. But, and also as Dan's point, it comes to that landing behind the Boiler Room right here, and this is like ten feet below here, so it's not, this is already, as you see these contours, very tight. You come up here, you're still going to make up another ten feet or so to get to the roadway elevations. So.
I guess, I mean, it's, it certainly can be done, it's money.
My address, I'll respond to you directly, it's not about the money. Okay? It is more preferable for us to have that road, it adds value to what we're doing. If we had a second mean of egress, the project would be much more valuable and desirable. So, we would want to have that, but as we look at that and we have our engineers look at it, it is, as a task, very difficult, and what becomes real difficult after the task is, we have to do and get it in. If that road is, is a major drainage problem, it's the entire campus, in all exact directions from that west side of the campus, that thing is going to be ice, and it's going to dump a, a whole lot of water. You're now going to have a funnel going to Bancroft in one spot, dumping all that water onto Bancroft and down.
Like we have on Prospect and Round Hill now. So, I mean, that doesn't make the problem, it doesn't make the problem.
Guys, bring it back here, Mr. Green.
One last comment, please.
I'm going to use this map. The forty-five percent grade is over here in the Boiler House. What I'm talking about, if everybody, you see, you see the maintenance garage and the engineer's house, there's approximately forty-five yards, a little over, between that and the road. I happened to go by there one day when there was a guy there with a hundred-foot, a hundred-yard measuring tape. It's about a five percent grade. It's a very, it's a very typical grade. There may be drainage problems, I don't know about that. What I suggest is simply if the city sent an engineer to look at it, if you'll call me, I'll be glad to walk through with them. It's, it's nothing like, it's not even an eleven. As a matter of fact, the guy who was there was surveying for coal ash residue, and he pointed out where there was a twelve percent grade, and it, and it, and it wasn't in that area.
Okay.
Yeah, that's true, too.
Question about the water flowing off on the, on the inside, is there still stormwater required for this review?
Right, so there's not an acre of disturbance, anything that would be, an acre more of disturbance would trigger a separate stormwater permit, and since they're, they've really sort of narrowed the, the scope of the project to a certain extent, it doesn't trigger that, and so there are historic flows in a lot of places. I mean, it's been mentioned, this is a hill, so the drainage is not going to be altered from its historic condition.
Yeah, okay.
I have a quick question. Do you think the storm are there, do you build additional buildings that every time there is a little bit of headwinds?
Well, the proposal in front of the board is what it is, and anything, any change from that would be, would require additional review, but given that the, the zoning allows a mix of uses, actually, Urban Residential C District in which this lies also allows mixed-use, office and residential. There's greater leeway with this twenty percent medical-type or high-retail-type office use, and the, the allowance for that is to make the development more, and preservation more feasible, so the city gains and the community gains preservation of the site. I don't think you could, and that's a permanent historic restriction, so you can't go back on that. So, once this is approved and granted, it has to remain, the uses within could change, but this, this site cannot change.
Okay, it's ten after eleven. Public comment's still open. We can continue the hearing, think about it, and go at it again next time around. We can close public comment and try to hammer through something, or, or close pub, well, I guess those are the two options. Either, either we stay and figure it out, or we continue this for another time when it's early in the night.
You guys should close the hearing and continue just the conversation.
Right.
Or we could approve it.
Probably above. Any preference?
I mean, if you guys are up for it, what time is it?
Ten after eleven. Like I said, we can, we can, we can close public hearing if we're comfortable with that and discuss, and if our discussions don't go anywhere, we can continue it from there.
You might want to go over DPW comments before closing the public hearing.
Let's hear the DPW comment.
Initial plan showed, oh, that's been addressed, sorry, granite curb. "The proposed granite curb is adjacent to existing concrete sidewalk. It's unclear how a new granite curb can be installed with adequate compaction without disturbing the sidewalk. Applicant is required to replace in-kind any sidewalk panels that are damaged with installing the curb. In addition, up to one year after installation, the applicant will replace any concrete sidewalk panels that crack or break within eighteen inches of the new granite curb. Cracking will be assumed to be the result of improper compaction under the walk during curb installation. Unclear if the four existing concrete walks that meet Round Hill Road along the western edge are handicap accessible. If they're not, these access points should be made handicap accessible when the curb is being installed. Installation of handicap access ramps should be considered on the east side of the existing crosswalks. Existing crosswalk striping disturbed by curb installation shall be restored." And then in terms of traffic, there's comments about, just sort of emphasizing the traffic mitigation letter that you all saw and then went to DPW, it's also on the website, about mitigation measures that have been discussed. I do want to add to that, there's been a discussion about raised intersections and speed humps, and in this situation, raised, raised intersections or raised crosswalks are different and require different drainage analysis. So, there hasn't ever been a recommendation for raised crosswalks per se, because that means it's going curb to curb, and then I think you also heard one of, I think in the letter, mentioned there's a concern about bicyclists and having to go up and over these bumps, but speed humps, the difference is, they don't go all the way curb to curb, so that would allow drainage and it could allow cyclists to go on either side. So, I just want to clarify that. "Round Hill Road is narrow and eliminating on-street parking along Round Hill was proposed as a possible way to improve traffic flow and ensure emergency vehicle access. If this mitigation is pursued, it will be through the established channels of recommendation of Parking and Transportation Commission and a change in the parking ordinance." The DPW letter also indicates that the office tenants will not be permitted to park on the easterly side of Round Hill Road where it's currently permitted. Moving on to, then, reiteration of some of the ideas about mitigation, which then could be worked through in more technical detail staff. For sewage, excuse me, sewage use, "The information shared on the plans for the existing drainage system is not complete. Prior to developing the site for new uses, the applicant will be required to verify with appropriate investigations that the existing roof leaders and surface stormwater system are connected to the municipal drainage system and not to the municipal sanitary sewer system. If the stormwater and sanitary sewer systems are found to be interconnected on the site, the owner will be required to separate the systems per approval by a DPW." And then in terms of the detail sheets, "Details are not numbered and are not easily located on the plans. Please number the details and cross-reference." So, I'm not sure, other than, let's see, it's not clear whether, where DPW standard crosswalks and signage is proposed to be installed, and I think that relates to the details. So, I think in my staff memo to you all, I also had mentioned that the crosswalk standards that the city uses and requires should be used to reconfigure the existing crosswalks up there, but there's some comments from DPW as well about doing that, particularly when the new curb is installed and those configurations have to be redrawn.
Does any of this preclude our approving it tonight?
No.
And have you seen this comment?
I think you could condition any of these.
There's also the, there's a couple of other conditions, Carolyn, that were in the staff report.
Staff, yeah.
Yeah.
"Inside or sheltered bike storage for both residential and residential buildings should be provided, particularly given the amount of excess unleasable areas within the buildings."
Yeah. I mean, I think, well, I think there's a question raised that there are five locations for bike racks, but it's not, you're how many, how much storage capacity that allows. So, I think it's a, a point that you might want to clarify with the applicant about.
As long as they're not visible from the street, they're still considered a new structure? So, with the historic, they can't be visible from the street.
If they're covered, or if they're just there?
If they're covered.
So, if a bike rack can be anywhere, but if it's covered, that's where you hit their...
Yeah, when it's covered, it can be interpreted as another structure that it needs its eye line.
An internal.
Right of sight, thank you. So, as long as it's behind the building and not viewable from the street, shouldn't be a problem.
What if it's internal to the building, in those wide hallways?
Yeah, as a historic preservationist, I would have a heart attack if somebody put a bike rack in one of those hundred and ten-year-old hallways, so it would have to be in the cellar.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think that's, I don't think that really matters so much, I think that...
Yeah, I think what we're looking for is internal storage in some of those buildings.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, you're like bunker, concrete, brick cellar, so that's, that's fine.
Right, yeah. There was, we can talk about the traffic mitigation, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, a couple of quick comments on what the DPW comments were?
Yeah.
The crosswalks, we included the details, we also included a note about, you know, the locations were to be determined, and we had ongoing coordination with planning and the DPW about what would be the outside mitigation and where the crosswalks and what type of crosswalks. We didn't feel comfortable putting a, this is where it's gonna be, here's where it's gonna go. So, we put a general note referring to that. We did try to address it. And also the drain lines, you know, we, those were investigated, you know, there's only so much you can do from above grade, and, you know, also the records from Clark were reviewed, and they were connected as best they could on the plan, so there was diligence done for them, it wasn't like something we just ignored, I just wanted to make that point.
And I think just to follow up on that, DPW is thinking smoke test or dye test or something to make that final determination.
Yeah. Were there any other staff comments which we haven't hit on?
That was it from DPW.
There was just one other thing, and that, before, you know, I'd like to get the applicant's thoughts on, the whole idea where we talked about is eliminating, or the applicant is gonna petition to the city that we remove parking on Round Hill Road, either on, I don't think you can park on both sides, I think it's only one side.
And it's only for sections, there is, the entire street is...
Right, right. And in fact, one of the, the abutters even questioned that as to the wisdom, because what happens when they have Opel and they wanna park on the street? But somebody did mention, is there gonna be the ability for people to use on a, on some kind of basis to make an agreement with Opel that they could do guest parking, you know, if somebody's having a party and they wanna see, can they contact Opel and say, can I park ten cars on your lot? Is there gonna be that ability for something like that?
To address that, absolutely. As a matter of fact, we are maintaining the dining, dining common, which is a commercial kitchen in Galbreth, did I get it wrong, though? Kaywith, I'm sorry.
Kaywith.
Along with the two hundred and eighty-seat dining room and meeting rooms on the first level, and we're leaving the open area on the outside. As a matter of fact, I believe we're hosting the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the school there. But that'll be available for people to rent out and to use, and, you know, we're not, if there's not parking there, like I said, I mean, we're gonna, we're not gonna police until we have to police.
Right.
Until there are, there are complaints that, let's say, Smith College students are going up the hill and parking and taking away parking spaces.
I mean, the other thing is, the city council could make any determination, saying, you know, no on-street parking between, you know, seven AM and seven PM or something.
Right.
Then, after hours...
And weekends.
Yeah, and on weekends, then it would be available, so that could be easily part of the city council ordinance.
Well, just from sitting on TPC, there's never a full unanimous idea about changing the street from anything to anything, so...
And they hate to put up signs, too.
Okay, do we have enough to close public comment?
I'm set, yeah, I think we, to extend it, we, if there's strong feeling, we get the
same opinions, we'd make everybody come out again for a long night, I think we've heard it.
Brandy, John, you guys?
Good.
Can I get a motion?
I'll move a close public comment.
Second.
On favor?
Okay. Two things to vote on, maybe?
Yeah, site plan and special term.
Well, the...
And the historic, were you voting on that?
Well, no, by approving the plan, the zoning requires that historic preservation restriction be reported, so it's one of the conditions that is in my recommendation for you all to consider is that, you know, the reporting hap, excuse me, happens, you know, prior to request for a building permit, that it's in place. And that's to comply with the zoning.
Carolyn, if the Clark School had a change in their business plan and had a rejuvenation of activity on their campus, would they have to come and ask anybody's permission to generate additional traffic or any of these things?
So, do you mean if...
If they all of a sudden had a hundred students or cars a day and buses and, you know, they...
In the, at Bell Hall?
At, no, at, on the campus.
Assuming that Opel wasn't taking over the site, that Clark just decided to reopen.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah.
No, no, it's a, the, the only thing that would trigger another review would be if new construction were to be proposed on the site, or a new use that wasn't a school use. So, no, they could tomorrow decide that they changed their business model and start up again, it wouldn't have any, there would be no review.
But, did, I don't know if they, did someone have to come for all these buildings that have been sold in the past and converted in from...
Yes.
So, each of those had to come?
Each of those came in for site plan.
Been dealing with this for years.
Right, and I think that's why we're dealing with this now, because all the buildings that, that lent themselves to being converted to condos have been converted and were left with this array of buildings, and it would seem, from a planning sense, that it would be best managed if it was by one, one developer, instead of each build, we're looking at something, essentially, nothing is physically happening to the site, which is what we would want from a historic preservation sense. And in almost every instance, if not in every instance, everybody prefaced their comments about quality of life and traffic concerns with, I love the plan, keeping the buildings, keeping the green space and so forth, but, and then we talked about quality of life and traffic, so, like a lot of things we talk about, it ends up to be a discussion about traffic.
Well, but I mean, the thought here is the worry of what would happen to ten acres in the middle of town. I mean, you can, you can keep people from tearing down a building for a year, I mean, that's, that's just basically what we can do. So, those buildings could go away, and we could have an entirely new problem facing us, you know, as far as what would happen up there. So, even though I'm frustrated with parking and transportation and full building or venues, I, I view this as a, as a, the kind of solution for the property that we had hoped to find, and I think that was the reason we zoned it, so that it would, it would be just that tipping point, so that you would have an interest in, in keeping those kind of buildings, the same for three big churches in town, and, you know, a lot of properties in town that we hope are going to be kept and maintained as historic buildings, that that was entirely the intent of those zoning changes, and so in this case, it's actually working to do just that. I mean, I, I hesitate to think what could go into ten acres in the middle of town.
Right, I mean, there, there had been discussions previously that before, you know, Opel came on board, that maybe in Clark's interest, they would start doing sort of individual demolition based on what their own feasibility said about what was reusable, and there, again, the only thing is the demolition review and demolition delay, so, you know, there was, there would be nothing otherwise that would prevent a property owner from doing that on their own.
Well, we've seen it, I mean, when Smith put in the science building, I mean, Smith was able to knock down, I don't know how many houses, it was before my time on the planning board, but, you know, that was a very controversial dozen? It was a very controversial project, because, yeah, they, they basically took down a bunch of houses, and, so, yeah, somebody could have bought this land and leveled the entire eleven acres and built, what, two hundred units? I don't know how many you can build on eleven acres, you can build a lot. And I was up there walking on Sunday, and it's a very pretty, open space, and it's just a great spot, you know?
Well, and I, unlike the mixed use, if we, if, you know, what you would hope that that does is, is live-work situation.
Right, and we're trying to project in some instances what's gonna happen ten, twenty years down the line, you would hope, to a certain extent, people are living and working in that area.
Well, and what I could hope from this is that we know what the buildings are gonna look like. I mean, that's, that's the beauty of this one, if you are for the, for the only certainty that we've got, looking ahead for decades and saying, that's what this hill will look like.
Right.
Now, the historic restriction, Carolyn, that they're gonna apply for, that we're making a condition that they apply for, would that, I think somebody asked the question, it doesn't rule out being able to build a new building up there, it rules out doing anything to the buildings that are currently there, is that...
The local ordinance, so there's two things, they're applying separately for tax credit status for historic preservation, so there are a whole set of rules that...
That's a federal or a state?
Well, it's, it's state, but it's with federal, I mean, you have to comply with federal standards, essentially. So, that's a whole set of other rules that are above and beyond what the local ordinance says. The local ordinance says you have to preserve the buildings, that the historic elements of the building, those are the defining features, you can't demo anything that would impact the building. It doesn't say anything, it doesn't look at it as a campus, 'cause the zoning envisioned buildings coming forward, because there aren't a lot, I mean, the church does have some campuses essentially around that have similar characteristics, but, so the zoning is a different thing, but the zoning says you have to permanently preserve the buildings, and so, I suppose someone could come back and request a new building within the site, but that may be inconsistent with the tax credit, it sounds like it is, so then that's sort of off the table.
So, we pretty much know what this site's gonna look like for a long time.
Yeah.
Well, and the two, the buildings that they're getting the tax credit for are the ones that are associated with the only big open space that I see on the, on the campus, so it's on the west side possibly, but it's not. And so, just to sort of review about traffic, it, I, there is, there's a whole permissible process for going before the Transportation Parking Commission and asking for a change in the statute that controls the movement on a street or gets rid of the parking, and, and so I think that that process should be the way this is handled, so that there is the, the full, you know, airing of it. It seems unlikely that you're gonna have that level of traffic without two full lanes of movement, and twenty feet wide is as narrow as it can be to get two full lanes of movement. We're fixing to restripe parts of South Street to ten feet a lane, so I mean, it's, that's a, that's a two-way road. I know the potholes are frustrating, they're all over town, but that will also keep people from speeding, I mean, it's a perverse speed, speed control, but it, it works.
What about the, I mean, Carolyn, do we, there's the hundred and three thousand dollars in traffic mitigation money, what's the process, or when does that start as to how and where that money's gonna be spent?
Well, actually, so there's a couple of ways that this can be allocated or used, and applicants can opt to just pay into a pot and then the city figures it out and has, you know, deal with it, but I think I would certainly recommend that instead of having the money given, since there's gonna, they're gonna be working in the street anyway, to go ahead and have the value of what could potentially be made in lieu to be actual projects, so we, it comes right away, it doesn't sit in a pot for a while for it to get, you know, sorted out. So, my recommendation would be that, you know, prior to issuance of building permit, well, prior to issuance of any site work, occupancy of a building, or within six months of issuance of a permit, you know, whichever, whatever one of those comes first, that the, for the residential units, half of that mitigation amount, a hundred and three thousand offered by the applicant, be put towards improvements for pedestrian safety, and that the other half come prior to issuance of building permits for the commercial units, so that you don't, you're doing it along and consistent with the impacts that are gonna be created, and that the mitigation be determined by, you know, and the detail of those mitigations be hammered out with OPD and Department of Public Works to decide, you know, exactly where it goes and what it is, and then, so then we would track how much money they've spent, and however far that goes, well, you get the improvements done.
Is everything still on the table, speed humps?
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing firm, we have to look at, I mean, I think there were a couple really good suggestions by Department of Public Works about, you know, traffic calming on Round Hill and sort of the whole issue about where those might go, so those need to be determined, and then pedestrian crossing signs are lacking on both Prospect and Elm Street, so those may make sense. DPW is starting to really like the high-tech versions of signage, so it may be that, you know, we'll get less, we'll get fewer high-tech signs than we will standard signs, so I think it's a balance of sort of figuring out, do we wanna spread out head safety improvements longer along Elm and Prospect, or do we wanna have some, you know, big-impact signage?
Public comments, it's over, so, if you're gonna say something, that's closed, so...
Okay.
You know, this discussion, the egress on both ends of Round Hill are bad, they've always been bad, you know, in the winter, coming down Prospect, you just avoid, because as many people said, you end up, or coming down Round Hill, you end up in the middle of Prospect before you know it, so certainly there's gonna be increased traffic, but it's, it's an existing intersection that's bad to begin with, it's not gonna make a good intersection bad, it's gonna make a bad intersection worse, and people will avoid it, I think, just like they avoid it now. And coming off of Round Hill and taking a left onto Elm, it's, it's a horrible juncture right there with the, with, across the road to, to go into Smith and the crosswalk, and there's a lot of things happening there now that don't make that left-hand turn desirable, but I think what's in front of us now is more desirable, or is, it's better to know what this campus is gonna look like twenty-five years from now and what's gonna be happening there, and if there's an issue with a left-hand turn coming on, onto Elm Street, that's fixable in the future, if needed.
I think people also will choose the path of least resistance, so they'll find other ways for the neighborhood, that's why we like grid streets instead of, you know, one way in and one way out.
Well, and that's what convinces me, that if the developer could have made the reasonable alternative access on the other streets, he would have, I mean, that's, it's just, that would be an incentive, he would want to do that. I come, I make a left-hand turn out of Henshaw almost daily, late in the afternoon, and it, it's a problem. I mean, the alternative is you don't know where, if you make a right turn only, you don't know how to get back downtown.
Right.
It's just, you have to circle a block in a neighborhood somewhere else.
Right. Any issues other than the conditions, DPW or staff or plans that we're...
Do we have to read the ones that are in the staff report?
I think the, except the one, I think, I think...
Yeah, I think...
I come, I make a left-hand turn out of Henshaw almost daily, late in the afternoon, and it, it's a problem. I mean, the alternative is you don't know where, if you make a right turn only, you don't know how to get back downtown.
Right.
It's just, you have to circle a block in a neighborhood somewhere else.
Right. Any issues other than the conditions from DPW or staff or plans that we can...
Do we have to read the ones that are in the staff report?
I think the...
You summarized one.
Well, I covered except one, I think, weren't I?
Yeah, I think you summarized, I read a couple, Stephen, and then Carolyn jumped in, and I don't know if there are any left.
What was the last one?
Oh, number eight?
Um, I didn't hear, um, what, did you want to make a condition about bike storage? Or how many bikes, um, are available on site?
So there's five bike racks?
Yeah.
What's a typical bike rack, eight?
It depends on what the designers...
There was a question, I think, of one of the things, comments, was that more detail was needed on, on how big these, what the storage capacity of these bike racks were.
Bike rack could be one loop.
That's right.
Yeah, I think that's not...
That'll hold more than one bike. And the existing bike rack on Gaway, that was one of the old-timey, uh, milking stall ones.
You can pick up and move?
Isn't there a bike rack design guide in...
Yeah.
Isn't there a bike rack design guide?
What's that?
Let's, um... Let's put in a condition that they have to be...
Um, but I think, so I think the issue is, though, it doesn't specify how many per square foot of office space. So I think, you know, maybe for the, um, bigger office, you know, gay...
C6, C6, C6 shows the bike rack with trash can. It's, uh...
Well, that's the one that's next to Adam's.
Yeah, that's what they're showing on the plan.
Right, the, the existing one on Gaway from the...
Right, so are we happy with this one? So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, that's... That's eight.
I think that makes sense, I think, though, that you might want to require some account of the cellar storage in the, in certainly the bigger buildings.
Right, I think we should, right, there should be...
The, you know, the residential and then the Gaywith.
So at least eight internal, then, if there's an eight, the bike racks are eight at the building, it should be at least eight internal storage spaces, or more?
Yeah.
Not more.
Eight?
Minimum, I think.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is if it's in a room, I don't know...
The what?
If it's in a room, I'm not sure if you need to specify...
Specify a number, I don't think.
Yeah, specify a number, you can just say storage available.
All right, so internal storage is available, and the bike loops, we don't have to say anything, because they're showing eight.
Right, right.
With a trash can.
Uh, there's the condition number eight from the staff about the trees.
Right, so for all trees intended to be protected that are adjacent to proposed site work, a certified arborist shall submit to the opposite plan development a statement indicating that proposed work will not affect the trees. Further, all protection measures recommended by the arborist shall be performed prior to any site work. And the conditions from DPW about the sewer lines and then the curb sidewalk, anything that's damaged, basically, during construction for curbing the sidewalk.
There's an ongoing conversation with Smith about setting up a covered bus stop on campus. And I'm wondering if this is the right time to get the covered bus stop on Elm down at the bottom of Round Hill? And it's that, can that be part of the traffic mitigation designated work?
I mean, I think it could be, again, so there's, there's an amount of allotted money. So I think we should look at that to see what do you, where, you know, does that make sense? Is it far enough along design-wise, and does it make sense in that vicinity, um, versus...
I don't know that I could decide.
Right.
Root map and all sorts of things that we would be...
Right, so I think we could do that at a staff level and figure out. But I don't think it makes sense to stipulate now, since we don't have all the...
We try to do that with the PVTA, and they, they don't make stops where we put covered, they, they stop...
That's the other issue.
So, we'll run the bus?
No, just because there's a stop there, doesn't mean they're going to stop.
Because they're PVTA.
Cleaning the dumpsters, which seem to be an acceptable thing, maybe that's a condition you want in there.
Yeah. Everybody in agreement with that, all dumpsters are clean?
Just make that, there's a zone.
Uh-uh, you are.
I think that's it for, for, uh, conditions.
You're sad.
Are we ready?
Yeah, pardon me, I have to say one last thing about the traffic, but, you know, for the last, I don't know, eight, 10 years, as, as Clark School has been closing, I mean, the traffic up there has gotten less and less. But historically, 15 years ago, buses, 100 staff, several hundred students, you know, and, and it's, 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 it's odd to, you know, seen it now. You go up there now, it looks quiet and bucolic, it just looks like a park. But that's because there's nothing going on up there. It's a, it's a, it's an 11-acre parcel, a quarter of a mile from a very vibrant downtown that there's nothing happening in because the place has been closed. And so, yes, any development up there is going to add traffic. And as John was saying, if Clark decided to open that school up tomorrow and put in 200 kids and 100 faculty, buses...
Then it'd be like Northfield Mount Herman.
It'd be like Northfield Mount Herman. So, it's, 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 it's not quite the right comparison to say what it is today to what it's going to be when this project is done.
But even looking backwards, I mean, my worry is looking forward. That, that, something's going to happen on that, on, on that parcel of land located...
It's too attractive a site.
So, I, that's what, you know, I'm, I'm upset about the traffic, and I know the neighbors are, and, and, and I'll hear a lot about it in other committees, but it's, it's a preferable use of the property compared to the alternatives if you don't. You know?
No, that's a really good point, I completely agree with that.
I agree with you both, all three times you said it.
All right, so I'll stop saying it.
Steve?
All right, I'd like to, uh, oh, there's, well, so we got to do, are we doing both at the same time, Carolyn? Or do you want to do one at a time?
You can do them both at the same time, too. I don't see the need to separate them both.
Well, one's a four vote and one's a five vote, though.
Right, but if, right, so if you think you need to separate, you can, but you're not required to.
Uh, I move that we grant the request for site plan approval to convert historic education buildings to residential and mixed-office use, and a special permit for reduction in parking for property at Clark School, Round Hill Road, Northampton, map ID 31B dash four and six, with the specified conditions.
Second.
No discussion?
Did somebody, no, he, oh, second.
Yeah.
Second, John's second. All in favor? Thank you.
Um, we don't have to do the minutes necessarily, but I do need to do this letter of credit for Villa Hill.
Letter of credit for Villa Hill.
Um, so, as you know, development has proceeded and roads have been constructed. They had a $3 million letter of credit, they want to reduce it down to, I don't know, they had 1.3, sorry.
This is Hospital Hill, Mastiff.
Yeah, they had 1.3 million, they want to drop it to 1.2, and then extend the timeframe. It was going to expire in November, so they want to extend the timeframe till December 2016, and you guys just need to go to approve the changes in the, um, letter of credit. But I don't need to...
Is that, you go along with that?
Yes, that's plenty of money.
So moved, I moved.
Yep. Second. All in favor?
Okay.
Want to do the minutes?
It's not residential, it's called, considered commercial, and it's not high-use.
I think you did a good job of explaining, you know, why you think it's a good project, despite the comments. So, no, I just, I wouldn't say that.
It's...
I think they all know.
It's under the umbrella of the 80%.
They're eating some of this, they all...
It's not, it's not as...
He's told them it's as good as...
No, it's residential on one side, on the other side, it's 80% standard commercial, for lack of a better word, and 20% high-use commercial.
The 20% change was to entice the development.
So it's 100% commercial, but, but 80/20 low-use, high-use.
Do we adjourn, we got one more thing?
No, we haven't adjourned.
We have minutes, you want to do that or do a next one?
Thank you.
It's, it's almost tomorrow, you want to do minutes?
What's a few more minutes?
No.
I actually had a correction on...
Oh, man, maybe we should wait till next time.
Yes, let's wait, I'm flat.
You did, you want to wait?
There's full of typos, it'd take forever to correct.
I, I found one typo. We can approve all three if you correct the one typo.
What, what's the day and the time?
Nope, I'm not voting.
Let's just save it till next time.
All right, send me the typo.
All right, can I get a motion, all right.
We're supposed to get the minutes every meeting.
No, we haven't adjourned.
Every meeting, it's 30 minutes.
Well, it happens because of this, then we're passing it to the next one, so...
Second, in favor?
On favor? All right.
I voted.
Good night, everybody.